Good evening, West Orange. Thank you for those of you who are in our chambers and thank you to those who are coming into our Zoom audience. My name is Tammy Williams. This is the West Orange Township Council and today on June 15th, we are having a hearing on cannabis workshop. So cannabis workshop, let me clarify. So with that, I'll have Madam Clark read the opening statement.
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. The notice for this special meeting was emailed to the West Orange Chronicle and the Star Ledger on May 18th, 2023. Councilwoman Gabor Michael?
Present.
Councilman Rutherford?
Here.
Councilwoman Scarpa?
Present.
Council President Williams?
Present.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So in West Orange, back in June, January of 2022, there was a cannabis ordinance that was passed. It has been in effect up until this time. West Orange has issued seven letters of support to seven different entities. One letter of support that is currently in play has been rescinded due to location challenges and the latest update is one of our entities received a different location. My colleagues and I since January of 2023 have been looking forward to the amendments that we can all agree on with the updates we think are necessary in West Orange. And so we're here again this evening with some latest revisions so that we can make sure before we bring this revised ordinance back to a vote and it failed for the third time, we want to sit and deliberate and discuss and make sure we are all in agreement on what we would like to see presented and the changes we would like implemented in our municipality. We have received copies of the current ordinance as well as some revisions that have been created by one of my colleagues. The process this evening unfortunately does not allow for public comment. Public comment will be heard when this ordinance presents itself, which hopefully will be at our next council meeting. So without any further ado, I would like to take the ordinance, section by section, and make sure that we're all in agreement with the changes we'd like to see implemented. And then we will have a consensus agreement and then present that to our legal department for implementation at the next meeting.
Okay.
So we are reviewing the current ordinance 2673-21. And the purpose has changed in the revised ordinance. The purpose of the ordinance is to update the provision of the municipal code of the township of West Orange governing the local licensing requirements and zoning conditions for licensed cannabis entities within the township of West Orange. To clarify, that it shall be unlawful for any individual or entity to distribute cannabis or cannabis products that do not have a license from the New Jersey Cannabis Regulatory Commission and a local license from the township of West Orange, including any gifting of cannabis or cannabis produce. Update and amend the total number of local licenses for licensed cannabis entities with certain exceptions. Two, require all persons holding a direct or indirect interest in a licensed cannabis entity to be disclosed by name. Two, require approval from the township for any changes in ownership of a licensed cannabis entity. I'm sorry, that was three. Five, provide that all licensed cannabis entities holding a local license must submit a renewal application not less than 60 days before the expiration of the local license. Six, extend the existing distance from the property line of any property with a school building for which the operation of a cannabis entity is prohibited from 100 feet to 500 feet with certain exceptions. And I'm going to stop there because there was some unreadiness between some of my colleagues and I'd like to open this up for discussion at this time. So is, do we have a consensus on 500 feet? And if we want to change that or amend that, can we have discussion at this time? I personally am comfortable with 200 feet.
I'm also comfortable 200 feet.
And that would not, that would be a change of 100 feet from the original ordinance as it's, as it reads.
I just want to say that 200 feet is about, you can just get a little closer to your microphone. Is really only, you know, a few blocks. So I just want people to understand what 100 feet is from a school. The, the one Pleasant Valley Way that the residents were very disturbed about, I think was about 450 feet. So 200 feet is half of that. And the residents were quite unhappy. So I just want to put that out there.
I think that was also assigned to that particular location, not necessarily the proximity.
It was proximity to the schools.
Understanding that, but I also, I'm sorry. No.
I thought it was because of parking was the main.
Yeah, I, I agree. There may have been some other issues, but the, the primary driving factor was parking, not limited parking.
I worked with those, I worked with those residents and it was a proximity to Kelly School and West Orange High School where the children currently vacation. And, and that at the Dunkin' Donuts, which is right across the street from it. And I'm, I'm very, very familiar with this issue.
Okay, as we all are, not a problem. However, I still want to articulate that as we have it now, we do have a distance map and it does not show anything outside of 200 feet. It shows 200 feet from Houses of Worship as well as from all of the educational facilities that the language will refer to.
So I'm in support of 500 feet also from both schools and Houses of Worship, which is in next clause. You stopped at the schools, but there's another distance requirement in the next clause from Houses of Worship.
Okay. So then I think in order, and what we also know is we continue throughout, this will not apply to the seven entities that are already, have already received letters of support. This will be for any new entities.
So are you guys? I'm finished. That 500 feet is good. Are you done, Councilman?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So from the very beginning, when I was on the task force, we, I was very disappointed when 100 feet came into play. I thought that was way too, too minimal of a, of a span. 200 feet came into play because that's this for a liver license. So we were going with that. Then we realized the federal, the, the federal amount of distance from a school is 1,000. And then this body, no majority, not everyone, at time to time was leaning towards the 500. I am, and Pleasant Valley Way actually 750 feet. But because of the Houses of Worship are in close proximity, that site and was all right because it wasn't because of how many distance from the feet from the school, but from a House of Worship. That eliminates to have a retail or, or even a cultivator in the heart of Pleasantdale Center where I received multiple complaints from parents and residents, there was not one wanted in that area. With that all being said, I'm very comfortable with the 500 feet from, from, from both. I think we need to, you know, we have a few sites already, but during the course of this process, it was always known that we were going to be changing the distance. And if you want a grandfather in because of the distance, but if they change their location, again, it's these leases, it's been a long time since most of these entities, and we could talk about the timeline since the process started from over a year ago. And I get it takes time to cure. I'm also in the real estate business and I'm still not understanding why some of them are having, are struggling to secure their leases after a year.
I think some of them made it clear that their landlord is extorting them and trying to get a percentage to their company, which is illegal. So we have to be fair to them.
You're absolutely correct. But then I'm hearing other, another side of the story. So whatever the case may be, I don't, you know, want to have there, there for anyone, for landlords or for investors. And we know this is a new business and there's nuances to it that, that we're learning every day. So I, right now, we're just talking about the distance. I'm fine with the distance being 500 feet.
Council President, if I may, Councilwoman Castellino, I think you bring a very important point up. I think the seven that have already been trying to establish their presence in West Orange so far, when they initially started, they were under the 100-foot rule. And we should allow them based on their initial applications to honor that 100-foot rule. If they do move, and so what I think we should consider what this means, once they are actually through this initial process, because we've had at least one and there's some conversation about a second that may have to move as well. If, once they are done with their initial, this initial step of the process and they receive all of their approvals from the state and are then able to open up, I do think if they move from that point, they should have to operate by the 500-foot rule. But until they establish their initial presence, because they started under the 100-foot, I'm, I'm comfortable with that because I think we would end up possibly and it could end up causing some trouble for us. But I'm happy to hear the, the debate. That doesn't mean, because none of them are 100 feet right now is, is
No, no. And that, and thank goodness. And that was part of the committee's, except for that one in Pleasantdale Center, which was a huge disappointment, the way that, that transpired.
Well, technically that one was like across the street from a shul. So that on that corner, there's a, there's something on that corner where the Chase Bank is, I think it's right behind it.
Yeah, and it had no parking and whatnot. But I'm not going to revisit that one right now. I, I just want to protect the process and protect the integrity of why we're doing this. And also, you know, I, I see the investors here and I know you've been frustrated with this whole process. I've been very honest and open my feelings towards this whole industry. You know, it shouldn't be near a school. So I'm good with the 500 feet. Now you had advocated for 500 feet from Houses of Worship. Are you still advocating that?
Yes, absolutely. And that's the confusion that I have. So now what we're doing tonight, if we, and I, I am fully supportive of 500 feet. And I, and I don't think there are any that would be affected by that. Actually, I think there's the one on.
Well, the one you just approved on Washington would be affected. See, that's where I was confused last time because you were favorable for the 500 and 500.
I think that one meets the, I could be wrong.
Yeah, no, that one's fine with the schools. Yeah, that one was fine with the schools, but not with your 500 with the House of Worship.
Well, the House of Worship is directly across, unless there's another, is there another House of Worship in that corridor?
Down the street.
There's one on.
By the firehouse.
Right across the street from Washington School?
Yep.
The Seventh Day Adventist Church?
Well, to the, down the street a little bit, but that one's more down the road.
What address are we referring to?
Right next to the firehouse, there's a House of Worship.
It's a Seventh Day Adventist Church. And it was, I, you know, the way it reads it's, it's from the property line. I think the property line of Washington School is substantially similar to the property line of the Seventh Day Adventist Church, but it, it could not be. I, I could be wrong. And actually, we can look it up.
That's what I'm trying to do. Can you tell me what the address is?
Just Google Seventh Day Adventist Church, West Orange. It should come up.
But if we were, if we were to change this ordinance today, they would already.
They should be grandfathered in.
They were already, they're already grandfathered in because we approved them. We're talking about anything that goes forward.
Not necessarily, because we have, we, we are aware, we do have information. What we know is that there were three entities in that same location. And so the other two entities that were in that location that have already received letters of support, more than likely will be coming back to us with a different location.
Right.
And when they do, we need to be clear. And we also, we also have to be mindful, the same conversation we have had in the past, that we will open ourselves up to litigation if we change the process during their application, if we change our process during their application period. Now, I want to remind us, and it is my understanding, and if we need to get legal on the phone, I have the liberty to do so. But I also want to make note that we also have the letter of support tied to a location. So if the location changes, we have to be mindful that we gave consideration to one of those entities. We need to give the same type of consideration. Therefore, if we make this 500-foot change, it doesn't need to apply to anyone who is already in the pipeline.
None of these seven should be affected by any.
I disagree because you have a few of them that have not, we haven't even heard from. So you, you got to decide today what kind of deadlines you're given, what you're doing. I, I mean, other than the few in the audience, at least they've been coming and advocating, there's, there's some sitting out there we haven't heard from. So are they even, you know, are they still active applicants?
Well, we won't know that until we're officially on the record in a meeting. And we, I mean, we have, we also have an update here that Mr. Moon provided to us.
Are we accepting Mr. Moon's update?
Well, Mr. Moon is.
Oh, no, I'm okay with that.
Mr. Moon is still the attorney that is working on this transaction.
Not as of Tuesday. He can work for free and we don't need to have that conversation.
We don't have to have this conversation.
Stop it now.
Well, I didn't start it.
I did.
I, my, my, my opinion is Mr. Moon is still working on this and Mr. Moon has the authority to do so. If that wants to be debated, we can debate that at, at a later time. This is for us to go through this ordinance. So again, I state that Mr. Moon has provided us an updated document. He sent it to us way before any of this began that showed the entities that we have provided a letter of support, the address, location, the, the letter, the, the date the letter of local support was issued, the type of business where there'd be micro or not, and then the type of cannabis entity.
So I don't think that the cultivation entities should be held.
Well, let's, let's just stay on the topic of 500. We'll get to that, but let's just.
But after that, because I don't think that they should have, be prohibited to 500 feet.
So, so I do need.
There's no in and out traffic.
I, I understand, but we can get to that at a later time in the ordinance when it applies to the different types of entities or businesses. And, and right now, we're only talking about the 500 feet distance.
But it's very, I get what you're saying, but it says all licensed cannabis entities. And I don't, I think we should, I think that the cultivating entity should be exempted.
That's, you're reading it correctly. That's what it says.
Yeah. And it's going to hurt them. You can't say all in one section and then go back and amend it elsewhere.
We said all entities. We grow, the cultivators shouldn't be near schools either.
Okay. Can you give me a rationale of what, that, why you feel that way?
People just don't want them near schools.
So do you, do you know what the process or the business of cultivation entails?
Yeah, well, I've learned.
Right. So what I'm saying to you is it doesn't have any in and out traffic. There's limited people who can work there.
People know what it is.
How will people know what it is? How, how will people know what it is? There's no, there's no signage that says it's a cultivating shop. It, it can really be an anonymous business building.
Well, I, I just, that's the way I feel. And most of the people that I represent.
So I, I think, I think we should be clear that what we do tonight is going to be hopefully helpful and move the ball forward. But we are not prepared tonight to deal with all of the nuances of the business. We have no delineation between the types of licenses and the maximum number of licenses in each space. Right now, we're looking at four. We haven't discussed labs. Some of us have discussed labs. We haven't discussed the impact of cultivators or manufacturers and where they can be located. And that's going to require a holistic approach that looks at zoning because there are some concerns about inventory. So what we do tonight is not going to be the end of this process. It is still a new business, a new industry for us in town. But what we can do tonight is agree on whether or not the seven that are currently in the pipeline are required to maintain a 500-foot distance if they move from their currently approved place. That's what I think we can do. And I think if we focus on that, we can probably find some agreement and then move to the next step.
So can I add to that? The chief, Chief Abbott, sent us an email this afternoon and he's respectfully urging us to consider, when formulating the new ordinance, that there be an ability, I'm reading his email now, there be an ability for the township to retain a cannabis consultant to guide the administration and to report periodically to the governing body.
No, no.
With respect, hold on, to our local retail and cultivation businesses.
Absolutely not.
I agree with him. I think we do need to get a consultant, maybe even a cannabis attorney.
We have enough consultants we can't afford right now.
Or even a cannabis attorney.
Can we just, can we, she, she did have the four?
Because then we won't have to do this back and forth. We'll have someone who's an expert in the industry, someone hopefully who has a legal background to help us with our.
Absolutely.
Absolutely not. I sat on the task force and no, because it's all geared towards the industry and I'm not, no.
Absolutely not.
You have to do your own homework and vet it out. If, if he needs a consultant, he can hire one later. We can, he can bring it up and we can appropriate the funds for that. We can't have any unfunded mandates anyway because we have a budget crisis. So let's move on.
So, so I think for sake of the efficiency and efficacy of this meeting, we should focus on what we're currently talking about. In addition to that, Council President, I would recommend that we have a full conversation about what the chief sent to us today. It, it deserves a conversation.
And this is the space to do it.
He is our chief of police.
I, I am not in objection. I've asked that Councilwoman Gabor Michael completely have the capacity to read, but you started talking and I'm trying to be mindful that you seem to think I interrupt you often. So when you were finished, I was going to ask that Gabor Michael continue to read the letter in its entirety.
Or to read the letter.
You can read the letter, Council President, because it's addressed to you. So I'm more comfortable with that.
Madam President, I would respectfully urge counsel's consideration when formulating the new ordinance, that there be an ability for the township to retain a cannabis consultant to guide the administration and to report periodically to the governing body with respect to our local retail and cultivation businesses. This is a new and burgeoning environment. Those of us being tasked with various responsibilities are likely not to have the requisite knowledge, skills, and abilities to ensure these businesses are in compliance. This suggests we will need to rely on the state, which is an option, yet one that should be thoughtfully debated by council. By way of example, neither anyone on my staff nor I have an expertise in physical security with regard to cannabis. This is not to suggest that a conscientious examination of an establishment security plan and operations cannot be undertaken. But at the same time, I'm aware of our limitations and that by no fault of our own, we may overlook security issues that would not go unnoticed by those with an actual expertise in the field. My suggestion would ensure that consultant provide random inspections of all licensed establishments and that the consultant have on staff or as a subcontractor, a security specialist with a background specifically related to cannabis businesses. The consultant would work with the zoning, health, police, fire, and various other township officials to ensure compliance and assist those of us who are eager to ensure these businesses are successful, yet at the same time, do not impose a detrimental impact on the surrounding neighborhoods, schools, parks, Houses of Worship, and the like. I'll defer to Mr. Moon on the wording to be contained within the ordinance to allow for the retention of such a consultant and to confirm that the specifics of the duties and responsibilities of the position are contained within subsequent contract rather than in the ordinance itself, should council decide to move in this direction. Thank you in advance for your time and consideration in this regard, Chief. Now, thank you for giving me the opportunity to read this into the record.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it because I had not seen that. I had spoken to Chief about it, but he had definitely put it in writing so that it could be read into the record at this meeting. I think he is the chief of police. I think while all of us have learned a tremendous amount about the legalities in the state of New Jersey, none of us have the professional expertise. This is why it has taken us six months to figure this out. And we have had some support of legal counsel, but I don't disagree that this is an excellent recommendation. It does not require that it be input into this ordinance at this time. It is just something for us to consider. His specific recommendation is if we move in that direction, that we do not include the language in the ordinance. But I do think it's a, a wise recommendation. And I appreciate you.
You're welcome. And I also think it's a wise recommendation because we're not experts. And for you to say, oh, go research it yourself and look it up, I think it is not a fair thing to say.
Okay. So are you done, Councilwoman?
I am done.
Okay. So all my numerous conversations with the state of New Jersey is like talking to this countertop. They're, they don't have all the information. The information changes. We're supposed to do things locally. I do not have confidence in that. And I, with the, we couldn't give employees to promotions that, that were deserved. And we're going to, you know, utilize funds for this. If I thought and felt confident, we would get somebody to come in. I want somebody to come in and be able to monitor the, the fees that we should be collecting on this. And there's not even a system in place for that at the state level with the expert that, that, that we were given to talk to that night on the Zoom call.
That's right.
Councilwoman. I, I completely concur. Councilwoman Scarpa and I were on that call together. We asked very detailed questions. We were on for over, over an hour because even you folks tried to, to come in on the Zoom and he couldn't answer one question. So this whole process has been frustrating. It's been delayed. We had the task force. That was, that was an experience, not to say, you know, we were just trying to, had that task force been maybe monitored and I'm not blaming on anybody. It's just, it should have been a monthly meeting. Everybody should know the date. I missed a couple meetings because it was like whenever you get the group together.
Councilwoman, let's just focus on where we are now.
I know, but you're, you know, just to the point of why we're here and it's taking so long. It's taking so long because this body, it changed, number one. Number two, we get political local pressure that I think is affecting some of the changes. We should have had this nailed down at the last meeting.
I agree.
And we didn't. I thought we were going to have that nailed down at the last meeting. So, you know, there's a lot of local pressure for this as well from investors. So, so this should have been done months ago. I agree. But a consultant isn't going to make the difference.
I trust my judgment.
Appreciate the chief sending it. And I know it's hard for them because it's been time consuming and cumbersome for them. But at the same token, this should have been done. We need to hash this out tonight instead of.
It needs to get done.
Talking about, we need a consultant. Let's just get this done.
So to that point, Council President, are we going to, with regard to the distance that's discussed in seven and eight, under purpose, are we going to require that if the current, if the seven current licensed, the seven that are in the pipeline move from their current approved location, that they have to abide by the 500 feet? Is that what we're?
So what, I, I don't think any of us have the comfortability to make that decision. What I would recommend that we do is we seek legal.
I, I disagree, Council President.
If I can finish my statement, please. We have talked about working together. We have talked about listening to each other. If I can finish my statement, please. We have talked about working together. We have talked about listening to each other. I didn't even get a chance to explain my rationale. So are we going to work together to this evening or are we going to continue what we've been doing? Thank you.
Council President, can I make a recommendation?
If I can just finish my comment, please. My rationale was we can make a decision and we can go with whatever the majority consensus is. And then we will take that information back to legal. My concern is if we change the process, whether it is attached to the address or not. If we are going to open ourselves up to litigation because it is viewed that we are changing their process in the midst of their procedure, then I don't want to put us up for litigation. So I can, I can accept that if we want it to be 500 feet and if we're all in agreement that it is going to be the grandfathered entities, if they change their location and there is no harm or penalty to the municipality of West Orange, that's fine. But if there is, then we will have to grandfather them in, in the capacity of their original application. And it's just that simple.
Okay. If that is the case, why hasn't legal come back to us with that concern the three other times that I've put forth?
Because legal, legal, legal is, does not review anything until we have a consensus. And we have not sat in an open forum and deliberated this issue until now. We have had discussions off the record and Mr. Kaiser has just explained to us that we have to have these discussions in a public forum.
So perhaps that's the question that needs to be asked legal. If they, there is a significant, serious concern that we are opening up ourselves up to litigation.
I just said that. Thank you.
So we need to ask that question. Have that.
No, 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 no.
I'm sorry. You do not have the privilege to speak. I, I apologize. Thank you. And I'm, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Council President, I think what we're doing is not productive right now. What we have before us are two clauses in the first paragraph. Purpose. The question that you posed to us was, do we want to keep it at 500 as it is in this proposed ordinance? Or do we want to move it to 200? The secondary question to that is, if we make, whether it's 200 or 500, what is the impact on the current licensees in the pipeline? It appears that we have support to move it to 500. So that answers the first question. The second question is, should something happen while they're still in the process of opening their, in this initial process? Should something happen to the plate, to the location that they've been approved? Would they then, in moving, have to abide by the 500 or the original 100 when they started their application? That is the question. The only question, we can, we can take a vote on the 500 feet because I think we've all expressed where we feel. I think we need a little bit of clarity to understand the impact to take the vote on the second part and if there's a vote required at all.
And can we include in there, if we can please have, have an exemption for the cultivating entities? I don't think they should be subject to 500 feet.
So I think what we, and I, I, I actually feel similarly to you. I know that some other folks don't, certainly on this council and in the audience. But what I think we should do is address that when we delineate the, the different types of licenses and the.
But the problem is right here in the purpose.
We can go back. If we have consensus, when, if we have consensus, when we get to that part, we will have to go back and come back and, and address this because it is changing the language. The language does have to be consistent throughout.
Yes.
So if we get to that point, we'll go back and, and update.
There's also an issue with.
Well, the, excuse me, the question, so the, the cultivators are already limited to the industrial zone, the I-zone.
That's correct.
So why limit them now to 500 from 100 feet?
Well, two, two, no, no. So first of all, 100 feet never should have happened. It did, but we always said 200 feet. I, I could live cultivators 200 feet, not 100 feet. The 100 feet never should have happened and, and aggravated that even happened.
Okay, so duly noted. And again, when we get to that part in the ordinance, we will revisit this conversation. So right now, I'd like to ask, is there consensus for the move to 500 feet?
Well, let's make a motion. I, I think the motion, I, I offer a motion that the existing ordinance be moved, the distance from the property line of any house of worship or school property be moved from 100 to 500 feet as it is currently written in this proposed ordinance sent by Councilwoman Scarp.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna reread that so we are clear on the language that is in this revision. Extend the existing distance from the property line of any property with a school building for which the operation of a cannabis entity is prohibited from 100 feet to 500 feet with certain exceptions, with certain exceptions, and an additional condition whereby a cannabis entity shall be, not be allowed to operate within 500 feet from the property line of any property with the house of worship with certain exceptions.
Can I ask, what are those certain exceptions?
We'll define that. We'll have to define that.
They're defined. This is seven, the seven letters of support. Those that have gotten issued the letters. That's the exception.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Instead of saying certain exceptions, please.
I, I don't want to go to the exception shit. Let's do them separately. Let's just nail down the language because I have issue with some of the exceptions. Okay, not a problem. So all those in favor of the, the change?
Seconded.
Correct. So vote.
All those in favor.
No, no.
You want it to separate?
Separate.
Okay, everybody gets their vote. Councilwoman Castellina?
On the record.
500 and 500, yes.
Councilwoman Gabor Michael?
No.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarp?
Yes.
Council President Williams?
No.
So the motion passes.
Before we exit this paragraph, there's a typo, I believe. Maybe I'm wrong. But in the early part of the paragraph before item two, so at the end of item one, item one reads, clarify that it shall be unlawful for any individual or entity to distribute cannabis or cannabis products that do not have a license from the New Jersey Cannabis Regulatory Commission and a local license from the Township of West Orange.
Councilman, can you just identify the error? Does it?
I'm getting to it. I wanted everybody to understand where we are, right? Have a local license for Township of West Orange, including any gifting of cannabis or cannabis produce. That should be product.
Okay, thank you. It would have been easier just to say product.
Whatever.
Thank, I mean, we're just trying to, we're just trying to limit our time.
I think that's the badness that goes on in here.
It is. And it wasn't necessary, but you could have just said product, product. That, that's fine.
Council President, if I may, I think it's important that we understand that not everyone will do things the way we would like them to do it. It would be nice if there was one way to approach solving all of these problems for everybody, but because we are individuals, we will do it differently. There has to be some grace for that. I would expect that from you as Council President.
Councilman, product would have sufficed. Thank you.
Yeah, it would have, right? And then you would have been, where are we going? Where does product go?
Okay.
Enough.
Fifth line, after cannabis, it says products. It could have, it should be product.
Can we move on, guys, please?
Provide, now, we have, we have approved that. Madam Clerk, you were good?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So now, the question then is.
Can I, can I?
Let's go through the document and we get to exceptions.
Okay.
So I, I've mentioned two issues before.
Can I continue to go through and, and read? We have, we have now agreed upon one change, and if I may continue, we are at eight. Clarify the parking requirements for licensed cannabis entities. And nine, provide reference to the Township Municipal Code provisions governing the standards and criteria for commercial signage for cannabis entities. This ordinance also provides for certain exemptions to applicants for a local license who have received a resolution of local support from the township prior to January 10th, 2023. Are there any issues with the language I have just read?
Before we can even get to that, we just made a change that had a secondary issue with it. There was a secondary issue. There are seven licensees that are in the pipeline, one stage or another. We just finished voting on one potential licensee who had to move their location. We know that that is a possibility for at least one more. How does what we just did affect them and do we need to put language in here if it does affect them? So that we can address that.
That's why we should go through.
And that's why you need to go through.
So that's why we need to go through because I'm trying to explain that and later on, we will get to it.
Explain it was completely inappropriate and inaccurate because it didn't explain it.
Folks.
Thank you for explaining it.
Let's, let's not do this. It's early. It's, let's not turn to another one. Three o'clock in the morning.
Are there any issues with the, with the completion of the first paragraph?
That does explain.
I'm, I'm clear. I, I read it. I read your revision. I'm clear.
Yeah. It, it comes down the pike here. We need to do, we need to take baby steps.
You were on seven and eight?
Yeah.
Are there any changes with the last language that I have just read? I've read all the way through nine. And I've completed the entire purpose section. Is there any exception to that language here?
Council President, I, I, I think we're, like, we always go back and insert because it says with exceptions, certain exceptions. So once we define those certain exceptions, I believe it's, it will be, well, that's what needs to be adjusted further down the pike.
Right, you're correct.
But I don't think we need to go back, but I could be wrong. And if we need to go back, we'll go back.
Thank you.
You're right, Councilwoman Castellina.
All right, Chapter Five, Section 340, 34.2 shall be and hereby is amended and supplemented to incorporate the following. The definitions for the purpose of this section, the following words and phrases shall have the meanings respectively ascribed to them by this section. Pre-approved entities means applicants who have received a resolution of local support from the township on or before January 10th, 2021, with all subsequent modifications, if any, approved by the Township of West Orange and whose cannabis business application with the RLS was approved by the Cannabis Regulatory Commission. I think the date is, um, the date is not correct, not January 2010th, 2021. It should be January 10th, 2023.
Okay.
Okay. So this language basically says, if any, approved by the Township of West Orange. Pre-approved entities means.
I don't understand why we're using January 10th, 2023.
Because that's when we close the process.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to continue. Stakeholders shall include all persons and entities with an interest in the business enterprise, including but not limited to all shareholders, partners, convertible debt holders, and option holders of a corporation, partnership, and/or other single or multiple-member business entity or other enterprise or other entity. I don't have any issues with that. We'll just continue. And if there's something else that comes up, we can certainly go back and insert. Three, Chapter Five, Section 34.3 shall be and hereby is amended and supplemented to incorporate the following. Local five dash 34.3, local license required, violations and penalties. It shall be unlawful for any individual or entity to distribute cannabis or cannabis products except for a licensed cannabis entity acting within the scope of a license issued by both the commission and within the scope of a local license in accord with this section. Concerns?
Uh, yeah. So if someone who is going for a license, bless you, Mr. Pagan,
Thank you.
and decides or have sold product outside their store before they even open the store, what happens?
Have they been convicted of a crime?
So it's no longer a crime.
No, I know it's no longer a crime.
I don't think you can have this in here.
Well.
Well, they shouldn't be, they should be, isn't the whole purpose to sell it in the store?
How, how, how have they violated? I mean, they have to.
I'm just asking if this was to occur, do we have a local penalty on that or?
But they have to have, they have to, how do you penalize?
Well, we're talking about the black market. That's what she's getting at. If there is, if there is.
I have, I own a liquor store, but I'm selling liquor out of my trunk to somebody. You're not supposed to do that.
Well, have they been, but.
I'm just saying, because I hope no one would do that. That's what I would hope, but how do we protect the community?
Is it regulated within the state?
That's what I'm asking.
So yes, it is, right? The whole purpose of having a license is to control how cannabis is sold. So to her, her question is,
Yes.
specifically to someone who is seeking a license, right? Because those are two different things. If someone is selling cannabis inappropriately in town, we should have a mechanism for some level of fine. It's no longer a, a criminal offense. You don't go to jail.
Yes.
But.
So you mean if one of the approved entities?
That is the separate part. If one of the approved entities, what the Councilwoman is asking is, if one.
Besides, they're going to sell to their neighbor or something.
Guys, I can't, I can't, I can't. Please, just one of us talk at a time. Thank you. Councilwoman Castellina?
No, no, I, I apologize. I interrupted that time, but to the Councilwoman was on the right point.
Yeah, if, if, if there is someone in the process of seeking a license who is selling cannabis without a license while they are seeking a license, her question is, what penalties do we have if that is found to be the case?
Certainly, I would hope that we would not grant them a license from the Township of West Orange if we could prove that.
Yes.
But we have to be able to prove that. There can't be a frivolous accusation. And then I think as responsible elected officials, that would be something that we would have no hesitation to put on the record as a rationale for why we were denying them a local license.
So where does that then, where is that language? And are we going to deal with that tonight? And again, we don't have to deal with it tonight. We are not going to be done tonight. And at this rate, we might not be done ever.
Um, we're, we only have a couple of pages to get through. Let's be hopeful and prayerful that we can get this accomplished in one session.
I just, just want to, you know.
Okay.
Make sure we're covered on all situations.
Is there more than one or two council members who are concerned about that at this time and want to put some language in?
I am.
That's one.
I'm, I'm concerned about it too. I think I expressed that. What I, what I think we should do is, is request from the chief of police, what the attorney general, because, because I'm not asking Mr. Moon for anything. I think we should be clear about that. We've already gone through that process. I think we should request that he get in touch with the attorney general to find out what the state guidance is with regard to that. And then whenever we revisit this down the road, we can. And there should be some penalties. I would expect though, the fact that we're even discussing it right now, if that were going on, that that would be an issue.
Yeah.
Uh, and then it would stop.
And, and we could just insert the language in this section because we're not proving this tonight. We're going to prove this at the next meeting, I think.
That is true.
Right. That's a good, that's a good, reasonable suggestion.
Pursuant to New Jersey Statute 24, colon, 6I dash 45C2 of the New Jersey Cannabis Regulatory Enforcement Assistance and Marketplace Modernization Act, no licensed cannabis entity shall be allowed to operate within the Township of West Orange until such person or entity shall be licensed and registered in accord with this section. For violation of any provision of this subsection, penalties shall be in accordance with Chapter One, one dash five. I think this language in and of itself takes care of the concern that we just discussed.
I'm going to Google it while we.
Um, I, I think it says that any, no licensed cannabis entity.
Have you looked that up?
I'm looking it up now.
Right, because when you look it up, it's, to me, it's unclear. It doesn't speak to individuals. It speaks to business.
Okay, and so if we wanted.
The way I understood it. So I can, I could be wrong.
It says until such person or entity shall be licensed. So it clearly says person here for the chapter one. But, but our language here says that shall, that a can, no licensed cannabis entity, not, not shall be allowed to operate within the Township of West Orange. No licensed cannabis entity until such person or entity shall be licensed by both. So that, it says it.
It doesn't. And I don't.
Not to your satisfaction. Understood, Councilman. Okay.
Okay, we'll find out. We could.
Yes, I think, and that solves it and then we can.
Yeah, we don't have to do that right now, but we, we'll tweet something for that. Okay. Let's move on.
Chapter Five, Section 34.4 shall be and hereby is amended and supplemented to incorporate the following. Five dash 34.4 local license standards and limitations. The township may approve or deny an application for. The township may approve or deny an application for a local license to operate a licensed cannabis entity at its sole discretion, consistent with all governing state law based on an evaluation of the benefits compared to the potential harm of the prospective licensee's operation of a licensed cannabis entity as proposed in the prospective licenses application for a local license. Is everyone comfortable with that language?
Mm-hmm.
B, the number, the number of licensed cannabis entities holding a local license shall be limited to a combined total of four. This is where we break out irrespective of the categories of licensed cannabis entities. Now, this is where we can break out if we want to discuss and exclude cultivators because we can, we can certainly, you have a recommendation, Council, Councilwoman, please. Councilwoman Deborah Michael has a recommendation. Thank you.
I believe it's a total number. I don't agree with the total number being four for all categories. Maybe we can have four dispensaries, but I think that we shouldn't limit the cultivating shops, um, cultivation shops. I think that, I don't know what the number is, but I don't think we should limit it.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I'm in agreement with that, um, suggestion. Can we have further discussion?
Yeah.
Council, Council, Councilwoman Castellino?
Yeah, so again, I'm not, for now, I, I want to keep it at four. We're already letting the entities that were already approved to be counted in that count. And until we, we see how this whole endeavor progresses, I would just leave it. Like, why open it up until we see, you know, we, we talk about the cultivators and the idea of it is hopefully they'll do well and will, um, make great revenue off of it. But I hear, you know, in other places, there's a smell to it. And so, and I know they have great equipment that they're looking to put in. And hopefully it'll work and we won't smell anything. But we're not going to know anything until these, till these entities start opening up. I am not willing to look at anything with the labs yet until we educate ourselves what the labs are and what does that mean? So I, and, and if we are interested in that, then we need to educate ourselves. So again, I know the industry and the investors want us to push forward and jump right into this. But, um, I think we need to be cautious. I'm anxious for, um, few of these to open up to see, you know, what, what they're all about in West Orange, not other towns, but what it, what they are for West Orange. So right now, I would leave it as is and, and revisit that in the future.
Councilwoman Scarpa?
I would completely agree with Councilwoman Castellino. I know that there's been a lot of concern from the parents that I've talked to and people have asked me, why did there need to be more than one or two uh, retail stores? And m- most of the people that I speak with feel that four is more than enough. And if we find that they're doing well and they're accepted by the community and it's a wonder, we're making money and it's a wonderful opportunity for West Orange, we can always add more later or amend.
So I'm, I believe that we should delineate between the different types of licenses. We know that wholesale is coming. We have, uh, d- delivery options and, uh, manufacturing, cultivation, as well as the labs. And as time goes on, there will be additional folks that would like to get involved in those spaces. And some of those types of licenses don't have the same impact as a dispensary would. So I do think we need to delineate to Councilwoman Castellino's point. I don't want to do it without having a full treatment of each type of license. I think part of the reason why we're still dealing with this now is that we've rushed. So let's, let's deal with what we have now. My recommendation would be, let's deal with what we have now. Let's get through this entire part of the process. Take a deep breath. And then create either some working groups, figure out the different parts of the industry that we want to focus on and learn about so that as a collective, we can make more informed decisions about the different types of licenses. Look at the town, look at the map, look at the zoning, and understand what those impacts are as well. Again, they don't have, some of them don't have the same impact as others. Delivery certainly doesn't have the smell issue. Um, wholesale may, um, manufacturing likely would. Um, um, but labs probably wouldn't. So we, but there are other issues that they all have. So rather than, you know, to start that process now and then not be able to finish what we came here to do tonight, I think we should agree to, um, whatever language we're going to focus on right now and be. And then down the road, revisit it. We still have time and there's nobody opening up tomorrow. So we've got some time to come back and look at it down the road.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Your, uh, recommendation has been debated.
Come on, Councilman. Councilman.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Your recommendation has been debated and it doesn't appear that you have the support to make that change at this time.
Well, then I'd like to make a recommendation to move the total number to four.
Is that a motion?
It's a motion. I mean, not four, it's a seven, sorry.
To increase.
Seven, increase it to seven.
I'm second that motion.
Cannabis entities.
I second that motion. It's been properly moved and seconded that the total number of licenses been increased to seven irrespective of the categories. Is there discussion?
Yeah, they're already grandfathered in. So technically, right now, you have seven. And if one drops off, it drops off. If two drops off, it drops off. So, and then we could revisit it when we see if they drop off. But for now, I'm going to be a no on that, Councilwoman. Sorry.
All the feedback I've gotten from the community is that we should go slower with this and we should see how it plays out.
Councilman?
Yeah, I agree with my two colleagues here, Castellino and Scarpa. I think the seven that are in the pipeline have the ability to open up. Hopefully they'll get, all get actually opened up, finish the licensing process, and we can always revisit the right number. I think we, we should have, I think we should have far more cultivators, manufacturers, labs, and delivery, um, and perhaps less dispensaries. Um, but, you know, I don't think we should make that decision tonight. I think we should go with what we have.
Okay, thank you. Um, call for the vote, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Castellino?
On the motion, no.
Councilwoman Deborah Michael?
Voting, yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
No.
Councilwoman Scarpa?
No.
Council President Williams?
Yes. The motion does not pass. So the, the total of four irrespective of the categories of licensed cannabis entities will be the language that remains. This cap shall be inclusive of all license, local licenses issued to targeted micro businesses. The cap of four licensed cannabis entities with local licenses may be increased to allow preapproved entities to move forward. In a, in addition, um, this language at the last sentence, it says preapproved entities. Is there a definition that talks about what a preapproved?
Yes, we just covered it. Preapproved, there are seven with the letters of support.
But it, it's the language the same? Oh, yes, okay. I'm sorry. I don't know. I apologize.
That's okay.
Okay. Chapter five, section thirty-four point five shall be and, oh, I know why I'm confused. I'm sorry. My concern was what this does not say, even at this point, is that the cap of the four licensed cannabis entities with local licenses may be increased to allow preapproved entities to move forward. But it still doesn't say, um, if they have a location change.
We didn't address that.
Okay. Chapter five, section thirty-four.
Wait, 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 before we move on. So that's what I was trying to understand in purpose, right? So.
Was that further? So that's why we should we go, we'll go back to that.
Okay, let's keep going. And if we don't find any language.
Something further, if it's not there, then we'll go back.
We'll go back. Thank you. Thank you. Chapter five, section thirty-four point five shall be and hereby is amended and supplemented to incorporate the following. Five thirty-four point five, application for local license and local license fee. Applications for licensing pursuant to this section shall be submitted to the Office of the Township Clerk under oath on a form furnished by the township. Upon the filing of the application, the applicant shall pay to the township an application fee in the amount to be established by resolution of the Township Council. Applicants shall also submit a copy of the application, except for the transmission of the requirements set forth in subsection B four A of this provision to the Board of Education, the Township Zoning Officer, the Health Department, the Township Fire Chief, and the Special Improvement District if the proposed location is within, within the Special Improvement District. Applicants can, shall also, okay. Applicants shall also submit a certificate of service certifying that the application has been submitted to each of these departments and/or bodies in accordance herewith. The Office of the Township Clerk shall then transmit the application to the Office of Police Chief for the West Orange Police Department or the police chief's designee for review of the application. All departments and/or bodies receiving the application shall review the application and forward their comments to the police chief for the West Orange Police Department or the police chief's designee no later than fourteen days from submission of the application. Now, this language was a little confusing to me because it says that the applicants have to submit copies to all these different departments. But then it further says that, um.
Yeah.
All the departments or bodies receiving the application shall review the, I'm sorry, it says something about the clerk.
Yeah.
The clerk gets it and then she transmits it.
But not all of them. And I see that's the problem with.
That's the way it was.
And that was on the.
Transmitted to the police department and the applicant has to give it to all those other people.
Oh, no, yeah, we don't.
We don't. The clerk should be responsible for doing that. I don't agree that they should be.
It's just as easy for me to give it to the police chief and then.
Yeah.
Right.
They would have to provide.
They may need to provide you copies so that you can distribute hard copies to those departments, but I don't think it's feasible or advisable.
The Board of Ed, maybe they can give it to the Board of Ed and.
Well, well, here's.
You should give it to everybody.
I think you, as the clerk, because we want to make sure that what they give to you is the same thing that gets communicated and transmitted to any other department.
How am I getting it to the Board of Ed? They're not a department. Okay, so, so can I? Can I jump in, Council President?
Sure.
So this language came from the original ordinance, um, that the task force was working on. And there was two, a couple of flaws there. So, um, I think you should get that. And I'll get you the contact from Mr. Moore.
Okay.
Um, of who you would send it to, an email and a phone number, because if we don't have it logged in, and I'll give you a perfect example. Uh, say, over the summer, the school board only has one meeting.
Right.
Over the summer, you know, that, that, they're not going to make a fourteen day deadline, I could tell you right now. Same thing with, um, with the, uh, Sid district. You know, we have meetings once, once a month. So, uh, uh, they're going to have to be under the standing when I, I, obviously Ms. Brill, I could talk, that's an easy conversation. She could always send that to her board members in an email if anyone has any issues. Um, but the school district, I'll have to ask Mr. Moore if he wants to go to the, to the school board and they'll have to do it amongst themselves um, or whatnot to bring comments back. But it should go to you and then out, like Council President said to everybody.
Okay.
So you could track it. Otherwise, we're not going to know if they sent it or not.
Absolutely.
And we need, and we definitely need their input.
Where in the Health Department, who in the Health Department, who in these other departments, such as? Okay, so the, to correct this language, um, applicants shall provide copies of the application for the.
We should give them a number. We should give the number. An applicant should supply.
How many copies would this be, Madam Clerk?
You just.
The Board of the Education, the Township Zoning Office, the Health, Special Improvement. So they should, hard, five hard copies.
Five, wait, no, 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 six.
Okay, then that would be six.
Seven with the chief.
You should have one more than the amount.
I would just say, I would just say ten copies.
Okay. I'm fine with that. So applicants should supply ten copies of the application to be distributed?
Yeah.
And you're writing this down, correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just looking for that.
It's on the bottom of.
Run on the fourth line.
Okay. Everything's being submitted electronically.
Yeah.
Okay, that's the other thing. That doesn't make sense. We don't do it in.
They're not supplying you with a hard copy at all?
I've only, no, I've never, I, I've never been the first one that received the.
I'm sorry, when the initial applications came into the task force.
Never got them.
How were they submitted or received?
I think a hard copy. I mean, I think, uh.
Okay.
One.
Electronic.
Well, when we received them, it was electronic. I don't know if that was scanned in or if that was.
Received electronic copies.
Yeah.
I've never received.
Okay, hard copies?
It's easier. It's a lot easier.
Okay.
And it's less expensive.
Submitted electronic copies or hard copies?
It was both.
It was both.
Who did you submit them to?
Electronic, so it was printed and then a thumb drive attached.
Okay, okay, so leave a ten then, ten and, and.
No, no, no. If it's, if it's a.
Thumb drive.
It's a thumb drive, you don't need but one hard copy.
Yeah, we did a thumb drive.
Okay. Okay, so we're going to keep the same process and be consistent from the initial application process to the secondary application process. So we're going to say a copy and thumb drive. Megan who?
Megan Brill? No, that was for their, that was for the, for the Sid, but.
Okay.
Yeah, because that was the way it ran. They followed the old languages. So just have them.
Why would Megan Brill get a copy of cannabis?
For the Sid, for the Sid, for the Sid district. So we know who's in the Sid.
But.
Because there, there's a, uh, it's zoned out on Main Street. Because that's what the task force.
No, no, no. The copy should have gone to the task force before they went to anybody else. The task, that was the purpose of the task force.
Maybe we have to redo that.
Okay, so, all right, that's passed and we're going to keep moving forward.
Yes.
It should be submitted to the clerk of court. That's where the package should be, should be, it should not go anywhere else other than the clerk.
Well, but here, that's what they were doing. That's why I said this needed to be cleaned up.
This is, yeah, this is, the, the packet needs to be submitted to the clerk of court.
Yeah.
This is an official document.
Yes.
I'm not certain why things were done differently, but moving forward, it needs to be submitted to the clerk of court in the format of one, I'm sorry, the municipal clerk with one thumb drive and one hard copy.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do we want to address this fourteen day turnaround given, you know, we, we had some conversation about our schedule. There's at least two months in the year where we only have one meeting. Um, do we want to address this fourteen day turnaround?
I think now we can. The whole idea of the fourteen days when I was on the task force was that because the, there was those quick deadlines in the beginning of the process. So that's where that fourteen days came from. So you've been, huh?
Thirty days.
Yeah, that's funny.
Forty-five for the Board of Ed.
Nah.
No, they meet once a month. They meet once a month.
All these entities will meet once, at least once a month, if not twice a month. So.
The Board of Ed meets once in July and once in.
Yes, they do.
They should be meeting more, but at least once, yeah.
Yes, they do.
Yeah.
Okay, so are we in agreement? Is there a motion to change the fourteen days to thirty days?
I make a motion to change the fourteen days to thirty days.
Is there a second? Okay, it's been moved and properly seconded to change the fourteen day to thirty days, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Deborah Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpa?
Yes.
Council President Williams?
Yes.
And it was fourteen days to.
Thirty days.
Thank you.
The application shall require submission of the following information. This is on B.
Okay.
The name and home address of the applicant. If the applicant is not a natural person, the applicant shall submit a statement setting forth the names and home addresses of all stakeholders in the application. All such stakeholders who are not themselves natural persons shall list the names and home addresses of the stakeholders of that entity. The disclosures shall continue until the names and home addresses of every natural person that is a stakeholder of the applicant, whether directly or indirectly, is provided. Is there any qu- concern about this language?
There's a typo there.
Yes, the application.
It should be application.
Okay. Where, what line are we on?
The third, the first.
The first, the first.
That's exactly why I did that.
You can just tell me what line we're on.
Third line.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Stakeholders in the application.
The applicant.
What?
The name and home, if the applicant is not a natural person, the applicant shall submit a statement setting forth the names and home addresses of all stakeholders in the application.
Right. In the applicant.
The applicant. The applicant.
Ma'am, okay, okay. I know.
I still think it's application. I think it's appropriate. I, so I can understand your argument for applicant. I, what, what they're saying is all of the stakeholders that are part of that. all of the stakeholders that are part of that applicant group. What is, how that's communicated though, is the application and that's where it would be delineated, so, you know.
Madam Clerk.
Madam Clerk, um.
Thank you.
Okay.
So are we changing that to application?
Yeah, I think we should change that to application.
Third line.
Right, right, right.
On the third line, is there a motion to change that word since it's in residence? I'm sorry, please, if you continue, I'm gonna ask that you remove yourself from the chambers.
So, so why do we?
We, but we have a legal team, and so if we're incorrect.
But they're not here.
That's fine, but this has to be submitted to our legal team before it comes back to us.
Leave that as a question.
Because it has been moved and is there a second?
I think if it changes the meaning.
I'll rescind my.
We should, we should ask the legal department.
So we're gonna.
Leave that open.
Okay, I'm putting a highlight there.
Should be a question right.
Madam Clerk, can you please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Can you please confirm whether the language in line three, applicant before that end of the sentence should be applicant or application?
Okay.
Talked about that. So just, just for, I think, um, either Rachel and I or Susan and I talked about that. And the reason why I thought it was application is because that last line says, kind of clarifies a little bit further. The disclosure shall continue until the names and home addresses of every natural person that is a stakeholder of the applicant. In that part, I think it is appropriate to have applicant, whether directly or indirectly is provided, I, you know, so.
We'll have legal, we'll have legal clarified and, and we'll figure it out when it's presented back to us, the appropriate language should be inserted here. Um, yes.
I just want to say on the record, uh, Ms. Versi, thank you so much for volunteering your time to help write this ordinance and take the time to review it.
Thank you.
Go through it and, and, um, so thank you.
Okay. All such stakeholders who are not themselves natural persons shall list the names and home addresses of the stakeholders of that entity. The disclosure shall continue until the names and home addresses of every natural person that is a stakeholder of the applicant, whether directly or indirectly is provided. And I think that should also say application.
No, that is appropriate use of applicant.
Okay. The name of, number two, the name of any other business entities in which any of the individuals identified pursuant to subsection B one of this provision have or have had an ownership interest which cultivates manufacturers, wholesales, or dispenses cannabis or cannabis products, invests or finances in any such entity, or is regulated by any government entity.
I, I have an addition to this, so, and because we had a question, we had to get additional documentation from one of the, the applicants. Because I had a guarantor. So I'm not sure if we need to add the word guarantor. Person guarant, you know, they.
It's a good question.
It's also a good state. I assume they were a stakeholder now that we're looking deep into the language.
But I don't know that it actually says that. You're right. Um, that's a good question.
Well, let's, let's.
So it, I, hmm, that's a good question.
Yeah, yeah. Cause I had asked for the corporate docs for that entity. And, um.
So Madam Clerk, can you in, um, item two?
Yeah.
Ask if we should include business entities or guarantors?
Okay.
Okay. Number three, a copy of the license issued by the commission authorizing the applicant to operate as a licensed cannabis entity with a copy of all application materials and documents submitted to the commission for a license. Number four.
Before we do, I just want to be clear. Um, in number two, you know, the state has different guidelines. I'm happy with ours and I think we're fine with ours. Um, the state does not require disclosure below five percent, I believe. If you own, you can be on another application if you own less than five percent of another or invested in five percent or so.
I'm okay with that. I just want to know who you are.
I'd like to see full disclosure.
If, if, if you're.
Cause this is down to like a fraction of a.
I'd like to see. I want to know every single person responsible.
Okay.
Yeah. And if they own two of them, God bless them, that doesn't bother me. I just want to know who you are, so when something goes wrong, I want to know who you are. And, and the reason for that is we had, we have plenty of properties in the downtown corridor. We're like tracking people down, that we can't, you know, different permitted uses that they, they violate and things and, and numerous issues that come up, so it's, and, and that's the main reason why I'm stickler with this. Because, you know, we, I just want to know who you are. I mean, I, I, you know, I'll be your best cheerleader, but something goes wrong, I want to know where to find you.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman. Um, number four, plans prepared by a duly licensed architect, engineer, or planner which shall depict the layout and design of the proposed location of the cannabis entity within the township. Um, A, the required plan shall depict the proposed security measures for the location in order for the West Orange Police Department to evaluate the sufficiency of the security measures as required under this section. The plan shall be deemed confidential and shall only be transmitted to the police chief for the West Orange Police Department or the police chief's designate. Any concerns with that paragraph?
Just a comment.
Certainly.
I, I referenced the other evening. Now again, when we interview applicants, we're supposed, you know, we're supposed to talk them, obviously not about the details. Um, because that is the responsibility of the police department and you want them to be secure. But we, we did need to, you know, to go over like entrances and exits and to be comfortable. And that was the whole reason when I said the other night, you know, we, we didn't have that interview when they changed their location, because these are, there's questions you can be asking them. Um, because each location's going to be different than the prior location. So if they change locations, again, moving forward, got to bring them in to have at least a conversation on how they're gonna operate the, the new location. Obviously not in full details, so that's for the police department, because we don't want to put them in jeopardy, but there needs to be some kind of conversation next time.
So I would just ask, is this an update? Um, to the ordinance as it's written, the, the A, the required plan shall depict the proposed security measures? Is this a new insertion?
No.
No.
Okay.
No, but to the Councilwoman's, uh, point, um, you know, I think any of that conversation should be done in an executive session. I don't think it should be done in public.
Definitely.
Um, so, you know, we'd have to figure that out and how to.
And we can, we can actually, if, you know, if it's the will of the council, consider doing the deliberation process in an executive session as opposed to in a public format. The task force wasn't public. Their, their deliberations were not public.
I agree.
I think that's a great idea.
And I always said from the very beginning of this process, we should treat this like we do the ABC board. Where the ABC board, you know, we bring folks in after the meeting closes out, so it's not on TV. And we could ask questions to the applicants in private.
That's, that's, that's completely agree. I, I agree with that.
Do we need to capture that in this language here?
I think we should.
Um, let, it, it would be under C. Well, we could add it as a C. So let's go to B. The applicant shall also provide either a lease agreement or agreement of sale for the property where the applicant intends to operate the licensed cannabis entity. The lease agreement or agreement to purchase must be executed by the owner of the property where the applicant intends to operate the licensed cannabis entity. The lease agreements or agreement of sale may be contingent upon the applicant's ability to successfully obtain a local license and if applicable, obtain approval from the West Orange Planning Board or the West Orange Zoning Board of Adjustment. No property owner may execute a lease agreement or agreement to purchase for more than one entity at the proposed location and shall notify the township clerk in writing of any termination and or expiration of the lease agreement or agreement to purchase no later than five days of such termination or expiration. So a couple of things, um, the lease agreement or agreement to purchase must be executed by the owner of the property. The concern I have with that is that if the property is owned by a corporation, you may not be able to get to the owner of the property and maybe the corporate's signator.
Well, it would be a corp, yeah, but then that would be done with simple corporate resolution.
And a, or power of attorney.
So I think, again, we need to clarify that, because India, because otherwise it's as it states.
An operating agreement for an LLC, no, you have the person signing.
I'm, I'm fine with that. I don't, I don't, I don't see any issue with clarifying further.
Well, we had in, a situation, one of the.
We know.
With, with entities, where the realtor signed.
Okay, but we're not, we're, that's why I want it clear. If it is a corporation, that we want letters of resolution for the corporation. And if it's an LLC, we want the signator to be the owner of the LLC.
Capture that with just the, you know, the owners, uh.
Well, there's an owner's affidavit that gets signed. I don't know why that's on this language. It's the owner's affidavit. So the, so the lease, the, um, the lessor, um, let's see, rather, has the, um, has to sign off on owner's affidavit.
No, but that's, that's the less C, not the lessor. The lessor is the owner of the building.
Yes, lessor signing, yeah.
Yeah, we.
They had, yes, so the lessor was signing off on owner's affidavit for the, for the leases. That's why the last one, I bounced it back because the owner's signature wasn't on there.
Okay, so do we have any language in here required?
And it's a, it's a, a notarized document.
But there's nothing that refers to them.
Here, but it's in the actual application.
Okay.
But if you want.
I'm fine with that.
I'm fine if it's in the application.
I still want the language, even though it may be an owner's affidavit, I think the ordinance needs to capture something if it's a corporation, so.
Oh, yeah, there has to be corporate resolution if it's LLC.
So that's what I'm asking is that we.
As well.
I'm, I'm, I'm gonna move that a corporate resolution be included if it is, um, owned by corporation.
I second.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
Just, I, I would add in, uh, appropriate corporate docs, because LLC would be different documentation.
Is that, um, an amendment to the motion?
All right, wait a minute, corporate resolution if. If.
The owner is.
If the owner is a corporation.
Or other appropriate.
Well, that's gonna be an amendment.
A corporation.
That's gonna be an amendment, because my motion has been moved and properly seconded. So if you all want to amend the language, we can certainly do that.
I mean, you can just do it one time.
Well, it's already, a motion has been moved and seconded, so we have to do an amendment.
So who you moved, so who seconded it, sorry?
Um, Councilwoman Deborah Michael.
Thank you. Okay, so I have corporate resolution if the owner is a corporation.
Yes, and is there a further amendment, Councilman?
Uh, yes.
Well, we didn't vote on that one.
Well, we, he's gonna amend my motion, so we'll vote on the, well, we can do it that way as well. Okay.
Take forever if.
Okay, not a problem, Madam Clerk.
I think, yeah, there has to be a little leniency with, you know, all these, this language, you know, it's, it's, I think you need. It's just, I think it, it's overkill.
I agree.
I really do. I think it's overkill.
I agree.
Okay, the motion has been on the floor, has been moved and properly seconded. Did Madam Clerk roll call?
Hold on one minute. Okay, Councilwoman Castelino?
Can you just reread it some?
Yes, corporate resolution if the owner is a corporation. That's what I was told.
I'm hoping to get home by ten, so.
Good luck. Good luck.
Yes.
Um, all right, Councilwoman Castelino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Deborah Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpa?
Yes.
Council President Williams?
Yes. All right. Number five, upon termination or expiration of the lease agreement, the licensed cannabis entity must cease all operations. Any concern there? Hearing none. Number six, acknowledgement and agreement authorizing the West Orange Police Department to perform background checks and or investigations regarding any individuals disclosed pursuant to subsection B one of this provision and any employees of the applicant. Any concerns there? Um, my question is, is, does this mean every single person who has an interest in the business has to have a background check? Or investigation by the West Orange Police Department?
I agree with you, Council President. I think that is what it says. I, I also don't think that's what we need. You know, someone may decide to gift to their twenty-one-year-old child one percent of the business. Do, do we really need to, to have a background check on?
For, I know that the state wanted to basically follow what they do for the ABC licensing. And I think we should have a background check. I think it's important. And if you change, like, if it's a change in corporate structure and you're giving one percent to someone.
I agree.
Go through it.
Okay, okay, but guys, just let her, let her.
We haven't had an issue with that part of it so far, so I just leave it.
And we've never had issues with that as far as ABC's concerns.
It just seems like good practice to me.
Okay.
Okay. Um, number seven, if the applicant is applying for a local license as a targeted microbusiness, a copy of any and all documents issued by the commission declaring the applicant is a microbusiness under the New Jersey Cannabis Regulatory Enforcement Assistance and Marketplace Modernization Act with a copy of all application materials and documents submitted to the commission for such a declaration. Any concerns there?
No.
Hearing none. Number eight, the police chief of the West Orange Police Department or the police chief's designate shall review the application, review the comments from the departments provided pursuant to subsection A of this provision and prepare a memorandum addressed to the township council, analyzing the applicant's ability to comply with all the township's requirements for a licensed cannabis entity, including the required security measures. Two, assessing the benefits compared to the potential harm of the applicant's proposed operation of a licensed cannabis entity. And three, recommending whether or grant, to grant or deny the application for a local license. The police chief or the police chief's designate shall transmit the memorandum to the office of the township clerk. Any concerns there? Hearing none. Within sixty days of the transmission of the memorandum of the office of the township clerk, the township council shall adopt a resolution, either granting the application or denying the application. The township council's failure to adopt a resolution within the sixty-day period shall be deemed a denial of the application. Any questions there? Does this sixty days, so this sixty days from the transmission of a memorandum, does that also mean once they've received a letter of support? Or is this coming back on the second?
The police does their investigation, then they'll send me, at least this sounds dumb, ABC, they'll send me a A or a N, whether they think it should be approved or not.
And so within sixty days doesn't mean it can't be less than sixty days?
Oh, it can be less than sixty.
No, that's what I'm saying. It does mean that it can be, okay. All right.
Yes.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
You just gotta give them a chance to their diligence.
Okay, any concerns there? Those are my concerns.
From the time they give me their letter.
Right. Or denying.
Right, so that's why. Yeah, if they're denied, it's over.
Then you have sixty days past that resolution. But you're not giving a time constraint on the police department to do their investigation. You really can't because we don't know how long it'll take.
Right, exactly.
Okay, I'm, I, I just wanted, sixty days is fine, it can be less than sixty days, and I'm fine with that.
Right.
Chapter five, section thirty-four point six, shall be and hereby is amended and supplemented to incorporate the following. Five dash thirty-four point six, license term, transferability, and renewal. All licenses shall be issued for the term of one year and shall expire one year after the date of issuance. Concerns?
Why do we have S's there?
Was it changed?
Okay, so we can strike that as a correction, Madam Clerk.
That's just part of it.
Yeah.
Like, I, can I just ask one question? So, um, you know, with ABC licensing, you have, the license is good from July first to June thirtieth. So that gives us a strict deadline for all licensees. So, is that something you wanted to consider? So that way, I, you know, it's all, giving them all at the same time.
Same time.
We have seven licensees. I know that those seven licensees are complying with their licensing and.
Okay, so we can do that. Um, my question would be, if we were to identify that, let's just say, um, someone gets their, so, well, I have a couple of questions. One, wouldn't you prefer that date be different from the ABC date?
Yeah, so I'm just giving that as an example.
Okay, and then number two, then how does that work? For instance, if someone comes in, and let's say we do it January one through January through December thirty-first. If someone comes in, do they pay that fee for the whole year? Is it prorated? What is the process?
They pay for the whole year, but, I mean, there can be exceptions. If they don't get approval until October, you know, they're gonna pay for the two months, that fee, and then they have to do it again in January, so I mean.
Well, why wouldn't we just collect the money?
It could be prorated. That would probably be the most fair way to.
No, I, I, no, I don't agree. I, I, I don't agree that it should be prorated. I'm just asking the question. We would, we would like to have the fee.
We don't prorate.
Okay.
I do it for limousine licensing too, so.
And you don't prorate?
Never.
So we don't want to start a precedent of something that we've not established? Does anybody?
Something you wanted to consider.
Okay, so, um, all licenses shall be issued for the term of one year and it shall expire one year after the date of issuance. We want to change that language. Is there, um, consensus for it to be January one through December thirty-first for the license?
Yeah, well, that, yeah, she's.
It's really.
Only because of elections or in June and November, um, depending on the years, some of them are more difficult than others, so.
We only have a couple, like, right now we have four, four of them.
Right.
Potentially seven.
Right.
So is it just easier to keep it on their anniversary date, or?
No, because they may have different anniversary dates. That's why we're trying to.
She wants to do it all.
She wants to do it all at one time.
Right.
So what part of the year would you prefer? That's not on the calendar.
I don't know. It's, I'm trying to think. You wanna, you wanna look or plug it in?
Yeah.
Well, we should agree, or.
True. What about, so the ABC is from July until June.
Is March a busy time of the year?
No.
So why don't we do March? Well, taxes are in April, so you might be a little busy with that.
Right.
So why don't?
So, so March.
Let's do March.
Fifteen to fourteen, because February has a twenty-eight to twenty-nine.
Right, right.
So March first?
No, March fifteenth to March fourteenth.
The following, yeah.
Okay, and then March fourteenth. Okay.
Right, so.
So their first year, they're gonna get a portion of the year, they're gonna pay a full fee, and then.
Whatever portion of the year, whenever they come in, they're gonna pay a full fee.
I'm agreeing with that.
Okay.
Um, and then March fifteen will start the first full year.
Licenses shall not be transferable, assignable, or divisible. I know that there's no concern with that. Number C, any change in ownership subject to disclosure under chapter five, section thirty-four point five, B one of the Township of West Orange Municipal Code shall be subject to approval by the Township of West Orange by written notice to the licensed cannabis entity within thirty days of the change in ownership. If approval is not received, the licensed cannabis entity shall cease all operations. Any concerns? Number D, or letter D, all licensed cannabis entities shall submit their applications for renewal no later than sixty days before the expiration of the lease. Okay, so we all know that it's gonna be sixty days before March fifteenth, because that's when the license.
It'll probably start happening in, in January, beginning of January, and you'll.
Well, let's, let's stick with the sixty days.
You know what I'm saying? There, there, there's no Mac, it doesn't say when they, it has to be done no later than sixty days. So they can do it ninety days, they can do it a hundred and twenty days.
Oh, certainly, certainly.
Yeah.
Yeah. The township shall approve or deny the applicant's renewal application by written notice within thirty days. If approval is not received, or if the licensed cannabis entity did not submit their application in a timely fashion, the licensed cannabis entity shall cease all operations. Any unreadiness here?
So does that mean if someone submits their application a hundred and twenty days before the expiration, that we then have to approve them within thirty days from the time we receive it?
That is.
And is that what we want to do?
So.
Part of what she's asking for is.
It'd be between March fifteenth.
Yeah, she wants to spend February and March doing, working with this. If that's the case.
So they can submit it. Let's say they, let's change this to your point, and then have it renewal application by written notice, then.
No later than March four, fourteen, or whatever day she chooses.
Well, why wouldn't it be the same, March fifteenth?
March fifteen starts the new year, so they'd have to get it before the start of the new year.
So about February first?
It's up.
Or February fifteenth?
I would let her.
Yeah.
Decide when she wants to have her deadline to get the response back. Because we're, we'll, we'll vote and we'll do our part if there's something that we need to get involved with, and obviously renewing the application is a thing, but she's gotta be able to process all of that and then do, and then insert notice.
So how much time do you need, Madam Clerk? I would say by January first, they have to have everything in, and then you take the time, and we have to.
Right, because the whole thing about that is that once they're approved and they go through this whole process and all that, you know, there's certain things that the ABC licensees, licensees need to do. Pay their fees, get tax clearance, if they need special ruling, you know, whatever the case may be, then they have to have all of that before we can renew. But I don't, you know, they're never, they're not really ever denied unless, like, God forbid, something horrible happens or whatever, and you want to, you know, it's, it speaks to, like, the special condition.
Yeah.
People.
But there are no special conditions in cannabis right now.
No, there isn't, but that's what I'm saying. There wouldn't be a reason to deny.
Yeah, as long as everything checked out again, they file their paperwork on timely fashion.
Through another financial background check, you're not gonna go through criminal background check, you're not gonna go through any of that.
Like, if there's, uh.
Well, well, the chief, what the chief is asking for, and what we've agreed not to deal with today, or at least not to deal with fully today, is some mechanism to do inspections, so that if there are special conditions that are imposed, or if there are violations, then it comes back before us and we can consider that.
Their tax fees, that would be a situation, so.
Right, wish it. So again, I think where we are in question is to submit their applications for renewal no later than sixty days before the expiration date, so the expiration date is March fourteenth. So they're required to submit their application sixty days before March fourteenth, and then the township shall approve or deny the applicant's renewal application by written notice within thirty days. So I think, I think that's clear.
Well, the, the issue, though, is, it says not later than, which means they could get approved today, and by this language, apply for reapproval tomorrow. Because it, it, it doesn't violate the.
But it doesn't, their license hasn't expired, though. Their license is, is good from March fifteenth to March fourteenth of the following year. So.
Follow the logic.
Okay, but why would they pay? My question with the logic is, why would they pay? Because they're gonna have to pay this fee for the license. Why would I want to pay again if it's not a whole year away? Because I'm gonna pay two fees.
I'm not saying that they would. What I'm saying is the, the, the language as it's written, the language that's, as it's written, would allow that, and then we'd have, then we'd have to go through our process, and so would you, because we have then gotten that, and we are bound by a thirty-day, you know, turnaround.
But speaking to the process, processes they submit their application for renewal.
Sixty days before March fourteenth?
Right. The police department with ABC, they go out to each entity, make sure that they have certain things on file they're supposed to have, and, and they inspect and whatever. So whatever inspection is required of these entities, they'd have to do. But other than that, there's really not much to the process, other than them paying their fees, giving me their application, the police department does their inspection.
All right, but let me just play this out, just so we can see how, like, if I were in the process now, we've got multiple folks in the process, and on March, in January one, I get my approval, I pay my fee, everything is great. I'm ready to go, I'm ready to open. On January one, I've gone through the entire process, everything is done, January one. It, my, my term would then end on March fourteen, according to what we just agreed to, and I'd have to then apply again. On, on January second, I've now been in business for one day. On January second, I could then reapply because it doesn't.
License hasn't expired.
It, but, so, so, let's, let me just read it, because I, I think I'm, I don't know why there's a disconnect. All licensed cannabis entities shall submit their applications for renewal no later than, doesn't say you can't do it any earlier, no later than sixty days before the expiration of the license. We, we, you could do it anytime, except after six, the sixty-day period. So in this case, January fifteen to March fourteen, you're not allowed to apply. You can apply any other time for renewal, and so we don't want that to be the case. We want to have a window, and I don't think it should just be those sixty days, because I don't know what the process is, but we want to have a window.
Right.
Where we know they are required to apply within that window, so that the work is being done at the same time every year.
Right, and I send letters out to all the licensees, the ABC licensees, and that's when they know that they need to come in. I mean, honestly, some of them don't know that they need to come in, which.
But do, so if you were to renew that license to, to further that logic, and I got my license on January third, and then I'm gonna, and I've paid all the fees.
Right.
License fees. I'm gonna come and repay another license fee for the next year, and my license is still active? Why would I do that?
Well, you can either.
Do it anyway.
You can change the lan, language to within, or you can say for the current year.
Then let's change the, for the current year. That's so simple.
Exactly.
Uh, listen, as long as it, as long as it provides a window. What my concern is, and, and here's the actual hitting the, the, the rubber hitting the road. We know November, every single fall, we're going to have an election, and we know that there's generally about a week or so after that where it is unknown what's happening. And then there's a bit of work that has to be done to prepare for this new body, however it's constituted, whether, when it's on our side or the Board of Ed's side, whatever. So there, we don't want folks to be submitting their applications at that time. There's nothing that says you can't in this language.
Right.
So there should be an opening date of some sort and a closing date.
Right.
So that we don't get inundated with work, and then you also probably don't want to have to deal with it, or, or force us to meet in order to meet this thirty-day turnaround at the end of December.
Councilman, do you have a recommendation on the window?
I, I haven't made a, 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 a motion, but I'm trying to understand the window.
Though, Councilman, is, I hear what you're saying, not to make more work on the department, but you, like, then you're, like, prolonging a business owner from getting their license.
So how, how, so if we're gonna do the March fourteen to March, I mean, March fifteen to March fourteen, well, so.
Renewal applications can be submitted no earlier than January fifteenth.
And no later than?
And it already says no later than sixty days, so we.
Well, that's one, so then they get one day to submit it.
January fifteenth.
Yeah, because March, March fifteenth is, that's sixty days.
January fifteenth.
No earlier than January.
No earlier than January fifteenth. So they have from January fifteenth to March fifteenth, that's two months to submit their renewal application.
So that's not what this says.
I just asked that we consider language that changes it. Applications can be submitted no earlier than January fifteenth.
Yeah, okay, how do you want to handle that? Because now your window where you wanted to do the work may be impacted by that, so you, you, you tell us.
I think I'm trying to understand what work is involved.
I don't know either.
We don't.
That's the point.
I know what works involved with the ABC.
I, I don't think the work's on you. I think on your work is like the ABC. It's on the, the police department's work, or whoever they're signing.
Right, because there have to be some inspections. There has to be some compilation of whatever violations there may have been.
Deal for them to go out and do their inspections. If that's the work you're talking.
Here's where I'm envisioning, and again, I know we have investors in the audience. I'm envisioning, the only thing, reason you should not get a renewal on a license is because you didn't, you didn't renew, obviously. You, you didn't do your paperwork, paperwork's inaccurate. Uh, you failed an inspection, or you didn't, you didn't pay your contribution on the, the taxes that we're supposed to receive, um, and, and that's a mechanism that will have to come out of the business office. So you would need to, you need to get approval from the business office, you would need to get approval from the police department. Just as far as what you're doing, is just making sure all those things happen to check in with that particular person, and the only other thing, I'm gonna add this that we didn't add, I'm not sure if it's necessary, we need it or not, just having it in the ordinance. But the ones that have the vapes or consider e-cigarettes, they need a separate license for that. And so that, does that need to be written into?
We don't have to address that now. We can address that at a later time. None of these entities are open yet, and they're not gonna be open in, in the next ninety days.
They do show how much product they have, how much is vapes, if you, it's in.
Right, but we can, we can do that.
But they need to know that they have to pay a fee ahead of time. Like, you shouldn't surprise them with that. That should be in the application, or, or here or somewhere.
Well, I don't think that has to be in the ordinance. It can be in the application.
Okay, and the other thing, I wanted to ask you, with all this and hearing what the Council College are saying and the back and forth state, at this point, wouldn't it just be easier for, you know, to do it based on the date of issuance versus picking one set date for all of them?
Yeah.
Wouldn't that make your life so much easier?
It's only seven.
It's only seven.
It's not like it's fifty ABC licenses.
And it would probably never be fifty.
Yeah. I don't think so. I'll be moving.
That's fine. I mean, you know, we're kind of dealing with something we don't really know.
Yeah, and that's the, that's really what it is.
So why don't we, why don't we?
Date of issuance, see what happens.
And then if we need to change it, okay.
All right, we could do that.
All right.
And the other thing, you might, I don't know if you want to consider this tonight, or think about it at least, the ABC, like, if somebody doesn't get their tax clearance, they have an opportunity.
To cure?
Yes. Um, so if you don't renew by June thirtieth, you can get a, what's called an ad interim permit, and it extends there. So you're just gonna.
No, this, all the language in here stipulates that if they don't do what they're supposed to do, their license is revoked. We have to be consistent in how we do that application.
So, yeah, let's consider what the impact of that is.
Yeah, I think that's better.
Because then, then we, if, if that happens and we're below the maximum number of licenses that we've agreed to, then we'll have to go through the entire process for another potential entity. We'll have to open that up, we'll have to go through that process, and then ultimately get someone approved. That could take a year or more. And in that period of time, we will no longer be earning revenue, tax revenue from that particular license, because we'll have one less. I think it, and it's not a business-friendly thing to do. I mean, and, and I can foresee, you know, life happening that can impact someone's ability to respond in a timely fashion. So there has to be some opportunity.
Thirty days to cure.
To cure.
Yeah, I think we should mirror the ABC, just as Madam Clerk.
Yeah.
And how long do they have?
They have, they can, um, apply for a thirty-day extension.
Okay.
Don't they get more than one?
No, that, that's for, that's for special ruling if they're inactive or have a pocket license, then yes, they, every other year, they can go to the director and, and ask for, you know.
But that's not an open business.
Right, exactly. It's not for an open business.
All right, so Kim, what's, what's the language in the ABC ordinance?
So before we do that, do, do we make a motion from March fifteenth to March fourteenth? So do we have to rescind that?
No, we didn't make, we did not make a motion. Thank you.
It's nice, but not to write everything in pencil.
No, we did not make that motion. Okay. Um, so we have a recommendation, rather, Councilman Rutherford?
I'm sorry?
We have a recommendation from you?
For the March fifteenth.
No, no, for an opportunity cure.
To cure.
Yes.
I, I think thirty days is fine.
Can I have a motion from you?
Yeah.
If, sure, I offer a motion that, uh, entities that fail to, uh, renew in, according to this section, are allowed one thirty-day, um, period of time to cure.
I second that.
That language can probably be cleaned up a little bit.
Yeah, I'll, I'm just putting general, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have an idea of what we're doing.
Madam Clerk.
Okay, so Councilwoman Castelino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gabor Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpa?
Yes.
Council President Williams?
Yes. D, all licensed cannabis entities shall submit their applications for renewal no later than sixty days before the expiration of the license. The township shall approve or deny the applicant's renewal application by written notice within thirty days. If approval is not received, or if the licensed cannabis entity did not submit their application in a timely fashion, the licensed cannabis entity shall cease all operations. Is contrary to what we just.
That was what we just amended. That was, that was the amendment. The thirty-day cure was for D.
No, that was for C. Any, I thought we won't see.
No.
No.
Okay, we won't do, okay.
I, I also just, for, for the record, want to state that the state does an annual renewal too, and they can renew up to ninety days before the expiration, and the state will inspect and clear them before renewal. So just, I want, wanted for y'all to know that.
Okay, thank you. Seven, chapter five, section thirty-four point eight shall be and hereby is amended and supplemented to incorporate the following, five dash thirty-four point eight, operating requirements and prohibitions. A licensed cannabis entity may only operate between the hours of eight AM and seven PM. Is everyone okay with that?
I'm good with that.
No persons under the age of twenty-one shall be allowed any licensed cannabis establishment.
I have a question about A. What are the other cannabis entities doing in surrounding towns? Do we have, do we know, is this, are we op, are we operating?
Eight to seven.
Eight to seven?
So, so I think that is perfectly appropriate for a dispensary. If I'm a manufacturer or cultivator, and I can operate outside of those hours, I would like to.
Well, that's why we thought about segregating the type of license, but if we're not gonna segregate the type of license in the prior sections, we can't delineate here. It has to be considered. we can't delineate here. It has to be consistent.
I think that we should.
Make a distinction.
Yeah, we can make an exception for.
I think we should make an exception for the cultivation and manufacturing entities, because we have them on our list. Just like I wanted to make an exception. Wait, oh, wait.
I, I'm gonna, Ms. Kersey, please, please, please. This is like the fourth time. But it's not fair to the other people who are sitting in the audience who I won't give an opportunity to talk. I, I, I'm not, I'm not. Ms. Kersey, I am going to compare you, because they have the same amount of interest, whether they wrote this ordinance or not. These are the people who have invested hundreds of thousands of dollars. So I'm gonna ask you again, please do not interrupt. I am only going to tolerate one more interruption. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Kersey. We appreciate all that you've done, but everyone has the same equitable right and interest in making sure this works for our community.
Um, so, okay, as I was saying, that's why I think it's important to make the distinction, at least with the entities that we have here, because we have cultivation and manufacturing entities, or two of them. And it's why I wanted to make a distinction within the number of feet, right, within houses of worship and schools for cultivation and manufacturers.
Well, those guys are only in, cor, correct me if I'm wrong.
Industrial.
Industrials, cultivation and manufacturing.
But it doesn't mean, doesn't mean that a cultivator might be, that a school might not be in the industrial zone.
Or even a church, and it hurts them, because we, I mean, now more than ever, we need this revenue. Um.
So we can go back and make that change. If you would like to make a motion, go ahead.
But I also think that this time, I think seven PM is kind of early. Like, what time are liquor stores closing?
I, I, and, but we do should, we should be consistent with other cannabis entities.
I understand that, but seven PM seems like it's very early for people who go, come back from work and commute, get home at six thirty. We're only giving them thirty minutes.
Would you like to make a motion?
I would like them make, make a motion for a licensed cannabis, cannabis entity, they only operate, and actually, a retail cannabis entity may only operate from the hours of eight AM to nine PM at least.
No.
Yeah, I'd say maybe eight, eight.
Is there a second to that? Is there, one moment before we continue discussing? Councilwoman, please, can, can I please?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there a second to the motion? There being no second, would you like to offer another motion? If not, I will offer that the hours of operation for a retail cannabis entity may only operate from the hours of eight AM to eight PM. Is there a second?
Well.
Wait, can we have a discussion?
If we are going to change, we, we.
We have a discussion before it is. The reason why I said nine.
But you didn't have a second.
I know, but I want to be able to explain myself. It's because people need time. When they go home, they put their kids to bed, or whatever it is, and then they get opportunities to go out there. People are busy, and they come home.
So if you, if you are doing this from a recreational perspective versus a medicinal perspective, the people who need cannabis, get cannabis. And the people who are recreational users, if they need cannabis, they get cannabis.
I understand that, but if, I think that we're, I mean, for one.
Okay, so is there a motion that you want to offer? Let's stop having discussions so we can get through it. Is there a motion?
No, no.
Because if, now, if there's no motion, then we need to go through and continue. Either we, we have had some debate. Is there a motion to change?
So I, I do think it is important that we discuss it, because in addition to the concerns that have been expressed, eight AM on a Saturday or Sunday morning is completely inappropriate. Um, that's, that's quite early. I don't think we allow other retail operations.
Yeah, they start at twelve, yeah.
And, um, and, you know, it may be appropriate on, on some nights to go later. Um, you know, do we want to do that on the weekends as well? Are we going to address the weekends at all?
Is it really a problem?
Cannabis, cannabis, a sand cannabis recreational facility in
Montclair.
Two, three ninety-five Bloomfield Avenue in Montclair is open at ten AM tomorrow. Their hours are from ten AM to, to eight PM every day, except for on Saturday and Sunday, they open earlier.
Yeah, and then there's one in Bloomfield that opens.
And they all close at eight.
That, that's open until ten PM.
Yeah, I, no, yeah.
So what are the, what are the opening hours in Bloomfield? Guys, guys, I know, I know, but you heard me just, I, I've got to be fair.
That's okay, we'll, we'll Google.
Can someone else, while we're doing this, look at another entity?
Yes, I'll take a minute.
Probably do that on the newsroom.
Okay, so I'm gonna do, what, what is, uh?
Maplewood is open Monday, Tuesday, and Sunday from ten AM to nine PM. Thursday and Saturday, ten AM to ten PM. So I, you know, I think we have to be a little fair. I mean, for one hour, why don't we do ten to nine?
Um, the Apothecarium is open from eight to ten, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and from eight to nine, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. I don't have a problem with the eight, 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 eight AM. And if we want to, um, perhaps stay open a little later on the weekends, that's certainly up for consideration. Just whatever the majority is comfortable with. Is there a recommendation? Because we can certainly.
So again, I'd like to make a motion. And I'm gonna follow, uh, Maplewood's model, the Apothecarium Maplewood, that on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Sunday.
So start from the beginning of the week, which, so that you're not, Sunday, Monday, so that we're in order for Madam Clerk to.
I'm just going off the website.
Right, but, but that's only because today is Thursday.
So go ahead, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Sunday.
For the sake of evening, just nine AM to nine PM.
Those four days.
Okay, yes.
Sunday through, Sunday through Wednesday.
Sunday, Wednesday, nine AM to nine PM.
Right, right, right.
And on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, nine AM to ten PM?
Nine AM to ten PM.
Is there a second?
Motion?
That's my motion, sorry.
No can do.
Is there a second? Is there another, a recommendation? Councilwoman?
I like it where it is. I think it's fine where it is. If we had to go to eight o'clock PM, maybe, but I think eight to seven is reasonable.
Would you like to offer a motion to go from eight to eight?
I'd like to keep it the way it is, actually.
Councilwoman?
Unless you want to offer.
I'm okay to.
For hurting his business owners.
It's Councilwoman.
Okay, sorry. You know what, Councilwoman? I, I know you're very pro this, and that's, that's great, because we're on opposite ends of this, of the spectrum here. But we got to find a middle, middle ground. And again, we don't know what we don't know yet. So you could always change this down the road. Um, I'm willing to go to eight PM. Sa- Saturday, Sunday mornings. I know, um, liquor stores open up a little later on a Sunday morning. I'm okay with changing that time. Yeah, so I, 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 I'm willing to, to move a little bit to eight to give them another. I think seven is a little early.
Eight to eight.
Eight AM to eight.
Well, I, I don't, eight AM is a little bit early, so I would go, because I don't think they'll get anybody in there anyway.
Have you not seen the other dispensaries? They have people coming at eight AM. They do. There's a lot of medical patients, so.
You know, I do want to reach.
I can support that.
Eight AM, okay, so is there, I'm gonna.
I'm okay for me, too.
All right, I'm, uh, let me make the motion, and then we can.
I want to make the comment. I just wanted to be on the record that a lot of our cannabis, um, retailers are in residential neighborhoods. If they were on major highways or streets where children didn't walk and, and people, you know, aren't sitting on their front porch, I would have a different take on it.
Okay.
Given that they're in residential neighborhoods, I think we have to keep that in.
Well, there is one.
Well, I, I'm gonna offer a motion that we amend.
Well, before, before, we're still discussing.
But we should actually be discussing a motion.
No, 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 I, I still think it does a motion. I think we should vet this out a little bit, then, then just do one motion, because Ma, I think she's gonna throw her pen, pencil out the window.
So we put in some language, um, earlier in this document, certain exceptions. We do have one that is on, right off of two eighty on Prospect, that is no, you know, schools or churches nearby, across from a mall that is open at least until nine. Movie theater that's open until ten or eleven, oh, no, actually, eleven or twelve. You know, we may want to have the ability to have certain exceptions given where they are located.
I don't, I don't think that's fair at all. I don't think that's fair at all.
If they were all on those kind of locations, I would be for them.
I understand. I, do we have, do we have, um, do we have a majority for eight to eight, eight AM to eight PM daily? Councilwoman, you indicated that you were okay with that?
Uh, can we go to nine on the weekends?
No, I mean, no.
I, I could support nine on the weekends.
I don't think it's fair.
Councilman, can you go to nine on?
I can support nine on the weekends.
All right, so I move that on Sunday.
But here's your problem. You have one.
We have three votes. We have, we have.
And you know what? There are liquor stores in residential neighborhoods.
Okay, but, but again, the, what I've witnessed, the in and out, and the parking and the craziness. So when you live down the street of a residential property, and they're gonna be parking on your house on Mead Street or other places, you don't live there. You have no clue what it's like when you have, you know, you, you have a property in neighborhoods that there, there's limited parking, and they're gonna come, they're gonna park wherever they can go. They can't find a space in the parking lot. So this is a balance here. Want to help them, but I also want to help the residents. But a- again.
How about, how about if we keep it similar to the way it is, and we can look at that later?
Well.
How much traffic and every, we can always.
Downhill's a lot different than up.
That's right.
I'm willing.
Washington Street.
I'm willing to change from eight to eight.
I, I mean, the Washington Street one, too, is not far from the Orange Border. There are major arteries right there. Park Avenue's a major street. It goes right into two eighty, like, you know, and that's, that's the kind of.
You have a side, you have a side street there.
Listen.
Problems down the bottom.
I, I am happy to go to nine on weekends. I'm happy to go to eight during the week. I don't know where my colleagues stand, but I'm happy to do that.
All right, so I, I, I am going to.
And by weekend, I mean Friday and Saturday night.
Well, we were saying Thursday, Friday, and Saturday night.
Thursday, Friday, Saturday, I can do that, too.
So my recommendation, my motion is that we do the hours of eight AM to eight PM, Sunday through Wednesday, and eight AM to nine PM.
Yeah.
My motion, my motion is from Sunday through Wednesday, from eight AM to eight PM, and on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, from eight AM to nine PM.
I second that.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, it's been properly moved and seconded that we changed the retail cannabis entities from Sunday through Wednesday, eight AM to, to nine PM, and Thursday, Friday, and Saturday.
Sunday to Wednesday, eight AM to eight.
Eight PM, and Thursday, Friday, and Saturday from eight AM to nine PM.
Okay.
And it's.
Right, the roll call.
Gotcha.
Councilman Ca, uh, Councilwoman Castellino?
Uh, no.
Councilwoman Gabor Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Can you come back to me?
Oh, no.
I, I.
Do the right thing.
Well, I mean, we don't always agree on what the right thing is, right? We don't always agree on what the right thing is. And I, and I think, you know, part of the problem is, you know, these things get contentious, and people stop listening to each other.
Councilwoman.
Yeah, I, so I do have an issue.
Councilman, can we just have the vote? Because we've already had discussion.
Wow, you rushed it.
Eight AM. Okay.
Want to know.
Thank you.
Okay.
Um, Councilwoman, I'm sorry, yeah, Councilwoman Scarpah?
No.
Council President Williams?
Yes.
So the motion failed.
Okay, so the motion fails, so.
So wait, Councilman, now what did you want to say? Do you have another option?
Thank you.
Because I don't think, like, I, my biggest thing is I don't want us to hurt these entities either. There are other entities that are open much later. I think nine is reasonable. There are restaurants open late. There are other en, there are other businesses open late, and it's not fair because of the stigma or what, you know, or because people don't like marijuana, that they don't want them open later. I mean, the reality is, you gotta be twenty-five or older to go in.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one or older, I'm sorry. Excuse me, to get in there. Liquor stores are open later. Restaurants are open later. It's not fair to penalize and hurt these entities, because what I believe is a stigma.
Okay.
I, I agree with that statement wholeheartedly, Councilwoman Gabor Michael. I, I think, you know, part of the challenge for me is eight PM on Sunday, that is, you know, I, I, I am.
Okay, so Councilman, would you prefer it be Monday through Wednesday, eight AM to eight PM? I'm sorry. Monday through Wednesday, eight AM to eight PM. Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, eight AM to nine PM. And Sunday, what hours would you be comfortable with?
Well, I, I mean, I'm, I'm good with, um, I, I would be willing to go as late as maybe seven on Sunday, but.
Okay. Is that a, would you like to make that motion?
Sure, and I need someone that has a contact lens solution if, if anyone does.
Okay, I'll, I'll go ahead and help you with that. So we're going to go with Ma, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir.
My, I move that all, a licensed retail cannabis en, entity may only operate from the hours of Tuesday and Wednesday, I'm sorry, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday from eight AM to eight PM. Thursday, Friday, and Saturday from eight AM to nine PM, and Sunday from eight AM to seven PM. Is there a second?
Second, I mean, yes.
Thank you. Can we have your vote for the record before you go, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and there was, so you made the motion and he seconded it.
Yes.
Okay.
And he's also cast his vote.
Okay. Councilwoman Castellino?
Um, Thursday, Fri.
It's Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, eight to eight.
Okay.
Thursday, Friday, Saturday, eight to nine, and Sunday, eight to seven.
I close at that.
You do agree with that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Gabor Michael?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Councilwoman Rutherford, for the record, said yes. Councilwoman Scarpah?
No.
Council President Williams?
Yes.
So the motion passes.
Thank you. Don't forget to insertion of a licensed retail cannabis entity.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, B, no persons under the age.
Just think, what about the, uh, cultivation and manufacturing? We should also include someone who retail, what hours of the cultivation entities gonna be open?
Oh.
Yeah, it should be.
Absolutely.
They're not in and out.
Okay, Mr. Jackson. Mr. Jackson. Um.
Well, they're growing, but.
Right, so is there, like, something to the method of growing them?
Well, so yes, there are different, there are different methods of growing.
Yeah.
So they can have growing twenty-four hours a day.
Yeah.
And when they, um, so normally, it's my, my understanding um, that they come in shifts. So you'll have a day shift operational, and then you'll have an evening shift operational that's coming in, taking care of the product, and making sure everything is cultivating properly.
Oh, okay. So yes, I do, I do agree with that, that you need somebody in there to, to watch over. I'm just concerned with any noise fact, factors. I mean, they're in industrial, industrial areas, so eliminate it.
I mean, we have a, we have a noise ordinance. I know we've got issues with it, but we do have one. And I think, you know, part, part of what we want to do is, is, you know, we want to minimize the impact on residents. We know, we want to maximize the business opportunity.
Absolutely.
The, to minimize the impact on residents, we want to be more concerned about dispensaries. To maximize the impact on the businesses, we want to look at cultivators and manufacturers. If they can operate twenty-four hours a day, they're gonna make more money, and we'll make them pay more taxes.
Talking and delivery, we don't.
So we can, we can restrict, we can address, we can trust, we can address and restrict.
Or you want to get deliveries at night, right?
Okay, so we can, we can add that in. Okay, so, uh, the motion that you would like to offer?
I make a motion that for a cultivation and manufacturing cannabis entities may oper, may operate twenty-four hours.
Okay.
Seven days a week.
Provide, well, let's, let's just say that, and then on the next, we'll add more to it. Is that okay?
I'm fine with that. I'm fine twenty-four hours a day.
So is that a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Um, it's been properly moved and seconded that a licensed manufacturer or cultivating entity may operate twenty-four hours a day.
Seven days a week.
Seven days a week.
Can we add something that says, you know, provided they.
We're, we're gonna do that next. We're gonna do that next. So is.
Provided they hear to the noise.
We're gonna do that next.
Yeah.
And we can just add it, provided that they.
Yeah, I think you should add it right here, provided that they.
They hear to the noise ordinance.
It should be done here.
It, it can.
Yeah, I'd like to see it done here, and then I.
But then we're gonna have to admit, we're trying to do it clean and fast. It doesn't mean that it won't go here.
Come on, Madam Clerk. Come on, Madam Clerk.
I think this is the appropriate place to put it.
It's all your fault.
Because.
You, you're the problem.
I'm tired from Tuesday.
Me too.
Me three.
Okay, provided they. Are in adherence to.
I, 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 I think it's not the noise ordinance that we're concerned about, it's the deliveries that we're concerned about. So again, I don't want it to just focus on the noise ordinance, and we can say, that's why I said to do it separately. Deliveries are limited to what hours that we wanna restrict deliveries. That's why I think it should be a second part.
Noise piece in there, huh? Interesting.
Well, we got the noise in there.
It, it actually is in there because anybody that violates the noise ordinance, you know, you can go after, so.
Alright, so what time do we wanna li- limit deliveries? No deliveries after ten PM or eleven PM? Deliveries?
Yeah.
Why would the delivery truck be that loud?
Unloading, unloading.
Okay, so eight PM?
Yeah, but they're not near industrial, so our industrial zones are a little tricky because.
I'm on your house.
There, there are, there, you're, they're earshot away from.
I looked at the map.
Residential properties, so they are earshot away.
That's why I'm a little.
So there has to be some misunderstanding that, you know.
I would say before nine.
Nine PM?
Eight, eight PM. I'd say eight PM.
Okay, no deliveries or large.
I think nine PM's okay.
Ah, let's do eight, let's do eight.
Alright.
Well, on the weekends, they stay open to nine.
But the, we're talking about deliveries.
So, so what? Why don't, why don't we follow the delivery schedule and hours?
Cause FedEx, you could drop off to like eleven.
Man, these guys are dropping off at midnight and one in the morning.
Why don't we follow the same delivery hours as we have the open hours with the same schedule for cultivation?
Cause FedEx, they may get deliveries late. No, it's not realistic for them. And my, my husband's a manufacturer, you, you know, you.
Okay, so what time are we gonna suggest that we stop deliveries?
I, I would say nine, nine PM.
Is everyone comfortable with that?
I, I prefer eight.
I prefer eight.
Okay, so we have nine and we have eight. Is there a motion?
Seven days a week. Am I right about that?
Do we have a motion?
Yeah, we had that motion.
Councilwoman?
Uh, I'll make a motion.
No, 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 we already had a motion.
Okay.
We already had a motion.
We're just amending the motion.
Gabor Michael, correct, and then Councilman Rutherford.
But we, we, is it eight or?
No delivery after nine PM, seven days a week.
Eight PM, seven days a week? Can we just?
I'm, I'm with nine.
I'm for eight.
I'm for nine.
So, so we're gonna have.
I'm, I'm with, I'm for nine, Sunday could be earlier. I don't think they're gonna get.
Well, the, the issue though, the issue is not the dispensaries.
No, no, we're, we're talking.
We're only talking about manufacturing.
Right, and, and those deliveries are not like little, they, they may never, may not be little trucks. Yeah, they're gonna be big. They, they could be.
Right.
Which has a certain level of noise, and that's just the reality, just driving down the road.
I, I agree with Councilman Rutherford, eight o'clock.
Okay.
Eight o'clock?
That's what it is.
What we'll do, if there's an issue, the.
We can amend it.
We can always revisit it.
If they're really having a problem.
Sorry, Madam Clerk, I just, I'm thankful for my pencil.
Okay, we are too. We are too. We are too. So it's eight PM.
Eight PM, seven days a week, no deliveries after.
Okay, so the motion reads that a licensed manufacturer or cultivator cannabis entity may operate from may operate twenty-four hours a day and may only accept deliveries between the hours of eight AM to eight PM. Twenty-four hours or throughout the week, seven days a week.
Eight AM, okay.
To eight PM, seven days a week.
Um.
I think it should be at nine o'clock.
Cultivating manufacturer.
Okay, but we're, we have eight and we have a consensus, so. Can you live with eight and nine? She wants nine, I want nine.
It's in an industrial area too, it's not in a residential area.
So, but there is, there are houses.
Yeah, but it's nine o'clock. It's not like it's.
I mean, you know, some kids, but, you got kids.
Yeah, if my kid was going to bed at eight o'clock, I would not want.
You might hear the noise.
It's just a boom.
You don't wanna hear trucks that late when kids are sleeping.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's eight?
I am comfortable with eight.
Okay, so it's, we have a motion and it's eight, and now we need a vote. Madam Clerk, for the roll call. Okay, Councilwoman Castellino? It's eight.
Um, um, uh.
You can say yes and no.
I'm gonna say no, I think it should, I really, like, and you know what a pain that guy's been about this whole process, though I understand manufacturing, so.
Okay, no problem. Madam Clerk, Councilwoman Gabor Michael?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpa?
Council President Williams?
No.
Okay.
Alright, no persons under the age of twenty-one shall be allowed in a cannabis establishment. No person under the age of eighteen shall be allowed in a licensed medical marijuana facility. Any concerns? The sale or consumption of alcohol at a licensed cannabis enti- entity shall not be, shall be prohibited. Cannabis consumption areas as defined in the New Jersey Cannabis Regulatory Enforcement Assistance and Marketplace Modern- Modernization Act, NJSA twenty-four colon sixty-one dash thirty-one at sequence shall be prohibited. A licensed cannabis entity shall be secured and have full-time security protocols in place, subject to review and approval of the West Orange Police Department, which shall include at least a twenty-four hour security video system with footage to be kept for at least thirty days and a vault for storage of money when the licensed cannabis entity is closed. Prior to the commencement of any operation, a licensed cannabis entity must first obtain from the police chief or the police chief designee written approval of the licensed cannabis entity's security protocols. The police chief or the police chief's designee shall have the authority to require additional safety and security measures. Moving on, F, a licensed cannabis retail and licensed medical cannabis dispensary should have no less than one onsite parking space for every two hundred and fifty square feet of space being utilized by the licensed cannabis retail or licensed medical cannabis dispensary.
Now here's where I think we were gonna add language for the cultivators, that they would need less parking.
Well, this already says licensed cannabis retail and licensed med- medical cannabis dispensary, so we don't have to worry about that. Chapter eight.
Wait, wait, so, so, do, so would we add a G to say would, again, would this be the spot instead of the application, just to let, put them on notice that they have to get a, anyone selling vaping products has to get that additional license?
Well.
For, for the e-cigarette license?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would, no, 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 no.
Cause this is, this, cause I, and the only reason I'm saying that is because of the, the heading, operating requirements and prohibitions, that's operating requirement.
Wouldn't they've already fallen under the health department's?
Well, we, well, it's, not all of them have vapes.
Yeah, but the ones that do, the health department will have to adhere, they would have to adhere to the health department.
But sometimes they don't, they need to.
But we're.
They need to know, it should be in here.
But we're sending, we're sending now the application to the health department and to all departments that have any interest, so that means they have to comply with the health department regulations as well.
Right.
So I think that's not necessary.
Okay, so then the health department would issue that.
Absolutely.
For their permitted use.
Absolutely, absolutely. Eight, chapter twenty-five, section twenty-four point two shall be and hereby is amended and supplemented to incorporate the following: conditional uses, specific requirements subject to the stipulations, guiding principles and conditions contained in this section. The planning board should have the power to grant conditional uses authorized by the table of district regulations in specified districts as follows. A, business and industrial districts, licensed cannabis entities. Licensed cannabis retailers and licensed medical cannabis dispensaries shall be permitted as a conditional use in B one, B two and I districts. All other licensed cannabis entities shall be permitted as a conditional use in the I districts. These conditional uses shall be subject to the following conditions. The license, one, the licensed cannabis entity shall be required to have a local license pursuant to chapter five, section thirty-four of the Township of West Orange Municipal Code. Any concerns? None noted. Number two, no licensed cannabis entity other than a pre-approved entity shall be located within five hundred feet of the property line of any property with any school building, and then we need to go back to that same language that said something about otherwise accepted, um, pre-, other than pre-approved entities.
So it's captured here, but what I think is, is missing is what the, the distance is for pre-approved entities, cause if we just leave it this way.
It's a hundred feet.
Yeah.
So I'm comfortable.
It's no, if we leave it this way, well, I guess, no, because a hundred feet is not gonna be mentioned. We, we moved that to five hundred. So there's no mention of a hundred now. We have, we have to put it in here.
Right.
A hundred or two hundred.
Well, it's a hundred, it's a hundred.
Potentially left at a hundred, cause that's what they did the application.
So, so here's how I, I, I feel about that. If you're pre-approved or approved in your location.
That's not the law.
You're, 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 you're good to go. However, if you.
Move.
Move. Right now, you're gonna hear to the five hundred, five hundred. I'm okay with your point with the, uh, cultivator to be less than five hundred. You guys could determine that, but I want the retail to stay at five hundred.
I think what we also have to be mindful of is, again, there is limited inventory, and if we have already given them a letter of support, it's gonna be very difficult for them to find the location with that five hundred clause. I also am very concerned if we are changing the process and they have already received a letter of support that we may be opening ourselves up to possible litigation, so I think we need. I, I think we need to leave the pre-approved entities in the format, because if we were grandfathering, if we were grandfathering them in, the pre-approved entities would only have a hundred. They, they only have a hundred.
You can't have them.
But, but I was in the interviews and I clearly stated to everybody.
That's right, and you've said it so many times.
We're changing the ordinance.
I, I support that.
And, and to allow a hundred feet for somebody to move.
Couple blocks away.
Themselves near a school is wrong.
I think you're right.
So, we also looked at the map, and I don't think anyone is under two hundred feet. I don't think there is a single entity. I think the closest one is four hundred and ninety-something feet.
So if we have allowed the Library of New Jersey.
They're okay, they're okay with it.
I'm sorry, so to move their location and their location move was only restricted to the one hundred feet, and we have another entity that comes to us with the pre-, with a letter of support. How are we then going to say to them that if they have to change their locations and we already have on our radar that they will, how are we going to say that you have to abide by the new guideline?
Cause they're getting it now. They're getting, because we've modified the ordinance and you've told.
But you can't modify the ordinance if they were already in the process.
Saying no to any one of them.
Yeah, we, we can. So I don't think that that is the reason why we should make decision. I, what I, what I, what I, all I'm trying to say with this particular one is based on the fact that we're changing the language now, when this is actually adopted, there will be no restriction for pre-approved entities, because that hundred feet is not mentioned in here anymore. We're changing it from one hundred feet to five hundred feet for the, with the exception of pre-approved entities. So there's no ref, there's going to be, once this gets voted on the next council meeting, there's going to be no reference to one hundred feet for pre-approved entities. We just have to stipulate, and if it's gonna be one hundred, then we just, for the pre-approved entities, we need to state that here. If it's gonna be two hundred for them, then we need to state that here.
That's what I'm asking is, but I, I'm asking that very question, but I don't think we should change it to anything if they're already received a letter of support. I think they should have the same restrictions that they had when they started their application process.
We said, when we grant, we only originally grandfathered all of them in, and I'll go back and show you the tape. We originally grandfathered all of them in just to, cause we, cause we went down to four. And we said, we'll keep the seven, but not for the changes, and that's why they've been waiting. We've been driving them crazy cause they've been waiting to see what the changes are.
So are you, are you suggesting that the, for those that are grandfathered in, since they knew it was gonna change to two hundred feet, that we change the language so that they're pre-approved?
For two hundred feet for just the grandfathered ones, because we were at the two hundred feet and they all knew that. But, but.
And it doesn't affect anybody right now.
No, and, and so the ones that are grandfathered, they're grandfathered in for the number and they're grandfathering this, uh, at two hundred feet where we were gonna put it. Now we moved the goalpost to five hundred, that's for anybody new coming in. So I could live, I could live with them at two hundred.
Is that a motion?
Well, do you wanna wait for?
Yeah, I, I think, I don't think that.
Think about what it means.
Sticking point. I would rather see it at five hundred, but it's not a big sticking point.
Well, yeah, I just, we, we.
We have to get this done and we have to be.
Yeah, I think that if we made them do five hundred, that would be.
But again, we still have, well, again, I'm willing to do that, but if somebody comes in, they wanna stick it right to hundred feet. See, I get nervous with the retail, that's the only thing.
Well, what, well, you know.
With retail being here.
What we should say on the record is, you know, they, all of the cannabis entities have an, a fiduciary responsibility to be good business partners with us, and I hope that they will try to find locations that are not that close to our schools.
Well, we can still turn them down.
And we can, and we have every opportunity and will if the location is detrimental to our community. So it behooves them to try to find appropriate locations that are not close to schools and and houses of worship.
So Councilwoman?
Because in no way.
That's okay, that's our dinner.
So where we are, where we are, Councilwoman Gabor Michael, is we are on number two, the licensed cannabis entity, other than a pre-approved entity, other than a pre-approved entity shall be located within two hundred feet, so that's an increase for them?
It says, no licensed cannabis entity other than a pre-approved entity shall be located within five hundred feet.
And so we want that to, to change to two hundred feet?
No.
No. With the exception of, you want the pre-approved to change to two hundred feet. Or we could just go back to the way it was written before and make that one.
So no license, so how about we say all licensed cannabis entities other, um, shall be located within five hundred feet of the property line of any property with any school building, excluding pre-approved entities that shall be located within two hundred feet of the property line of any.
No, cause then you're putting them within five hundred or two hundred.
The way it was worded was good. All you have to do is change the one hundred to two hundred, back on the other page. The pre-approved entities, you want. It was worded very right.
This is, this is worded correctly. No licensed cannabis entity other than a.
Oh, it says it on the next line, yeah.
Shall be located within five hundred feet.
Okay, that's fine. And then on the next one, are we in agreement with that then? We can move on?
Well, we are.
But number three says.
Cultivation and manufacturers, we have to determine.
It says on the number three, no licensed cannabis en- entity other than a pre-approved entity shall be located within five hundred feet from the property with, of any house of worship as defined under chapter twenty-five.
It's right there.
Okay, and then number four.
Someone wanted to change it to a hundred.
Wait, wait, number four says no licensed cannabis entity shall, that is, no licensed cannabis entity that is a pre-approved entity shall be located within two hundred feet from the property line of any property of any school building. No licensed cannabis entity that is a pre-approved entity shall be located within two hundred feet from the property line of any property within a house of worship as defined under chapter twenty-five. It's already here.
Right, but you wanted to do a hundred, I, I thought that was.
So now, number four.
Cause that's what they applied under initially.
I, I do want to keep it at a hundred. You're absolutely correct. But you all don't.
Right.
And so there's no support for reducing it down to one hundred, so we, we, it's already here.
We've agreed already here.
It's already here.
Wait, can we please distinguish the cultivation, manufacturing entities?
Yes, this would be where we would do that.
Yeah, this is where we have.
This is where we would do that.
No, I don't think moving forward, any new businesses, other than the ones that have already gotten the letters of support, should be able to be right on top of schools and churches. Are you saying that go, any cultivator?
Yeah, I don't think they should be subject to five hundred feet.
I think they should.
I don't think so.
Okay.
So can we have?
Right now, the ones that are. The cultivators now that have been approved can go to hundred feet.
Right, exactly.
So let's let's stick with this for now. Let them open and see.
See if there's a smell or noise.
And then, and then, and then we could always let them come down to two hundred if any new ones.
And I think.
Cultivator right now. We have two of them.
We have a cultivator right now, peace and mind construction on Ashland, which is having lease issues. And they're cultivated. So they're right now grandfathered in.
With the old, with the original ordinance, the ordinance now in place, it says a hundred.
No, yeah, yeah.
As of this, it'll be two hundred.
As of this, it'll be two hundred.
Two hundred is more than reasonable.
But it what what to Councilwoman Gabor Michael's point, I think we need to, instead of doing a piecemeal. So when we delineate the different licenses, I think we can make those stipulations. For cultivators, manufacturers, labs, delivery, whatever. Because, you know, the, I mean, to make that decision, we have to just have a conversation about what is the impact on their close by neighbors.
And we have to see what happens.
The impact from a cultivator or manufacturer is going to be different. The concern, and just so we're clear, and this is not really for y'all, because we've had these conversations for the public. The concern is that people will, because cannabis is legal now, people will not abide by the rules that state. You cannot consume cannabis in the space where you buy it, on the premises of the dispensary where you purchased it. And so there's a concern that people will walk out and it's, even if they abide by that, as soon as they're past the property line of the dispensary. They're no longer prohibited from consuming cannabis. And that will then have an impact or could have an impact on the local neighbors. That you don't have the same concern with cultivators and manufacturers or wholesalers or labs or delivery.
We don't have, just by the record, the only licenses that we allow don't include. All of those entities. They're not even in our ordinance yet.
No, well, we've not excluded any, and some of them aren't even open yet. Um but we've not excluded any with the exception of consumption. So the only one that we've said we will not allow is consumption, which means if the state opens up licenses for other things and people want to.
Wait, wait, council.
They could.
Did you lose your candy? Do I need?
No, I have my candy. I have my candy.
Do you want an extra one?
Thank you.
No, I didn't. I was afraid it was down my throat.
It's just allergies. I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I was afraid it was down your throat.
Oh, no, I I would have did one of those, but no, I'm not, I'm not choking to death, but not in front of the candy, but I am choking to death. Okay. Um, Councilman, go ahead and continue, please.
Yeah, just, I, so, you know, the the bottom line is, I think we can do a full treatment down the road when we delineate the licenses.
We gotta get these guys out. All right. So we're okay, Councilwoman?
I guess I don't have a choice. It was hard.
Okay, um. All licensed cannabis entities shall comply with the following parking requirements for non-residential uses. Licensed cannabis retailers shall comply with the minimum required number of parking spaces for retail stores and personal services stores or studios. Not separately listed. And all other licensed cannabis entities shall comply with the minimum required number of parking spaces. For light industrial laboratory and research use. I think this also speaks to the reduction in the number of parking spaces. There's a different standard for um a medicinal and retail consumption as opposed, even in our own personal code. Councilwoman Gabor Michael, just so that you have that information.
Well, the question I have is, in one, licensed cannabis retailers shall comply with the minimum number of of. With the minimum required number of parking spaces for retail stores and personal service stores. And I can't remember if it was two hundred feet that he said or two hundred and fifty feet for retail stores.
It's two hundred and fifty.
It's two fifty up here. Is is, what is it for retail stores that are not cannabis?
It's con, it's consistent.
That's the thing. I don't know. Is it?
No, I asked that question. I asked, I asked that question before in the past, because when we changed it, I thought it was very restrictive. And I didn't think it had to have that many spaces. Um so I I've asked the question.
Yeah, I thought it was consistent.
And be reminded that this is a chapter twenty five.
Land use provision.
So it does go before the planning board before you can approve it.
It's consistent. Thank you. All right, y'all, stop it. But I I'm telling my colleagues this is consistent. Number seven, no can, no licensed cannabis entity shall be housed in a vehicle or any movable. Or mobile structure. No licensed cannabis entity shall be allowed to operate as a home occupation. And I think um that we also need to include, because this is something that occurred on the planning board. There was a facility that is now um taking over the bank and there was a drive-through window at that bank. And there was an assumption that they were going to have a drive-by dispensary. So I think we need to put in here that no drive-through dispensaries are permitted in our township. My rationale for that as a member of the planning board, because while you require someone to come in. That's always at least eighteen for medicinal purchases and twenty one for recreational purchases. I might be twenty one and have to show you my license and my car, but I may have other passengers in my car who are underage. And I want to be able to regulate that.
That's true.
But they could be in the car parked. It could be in the car parked, right? And then you walk in twenty one or twenty five, however old you are, get what you want, walk out and go back.
But if they're in the car, and that that's, that's fine. But just coming through a drive-through is an easier accessibility. And what we want to stay focused on is, do we want to make it easy for that to happen? If you're underage and have the, and and there's, again, you might be in the car, but you don't have, you can't, you're not buying. That's the transaction taking place. And I'm under eighteen or twenty.
Drive-through um alcohol liquor store.
Not in West Orange, they aren't. Not in West Orange.
But they exist.
But we're talking about West Orange, so in West Orange, I don't, I'm not supportive of a drive-through.
I wouldn't support that either.
I don't, I mean, you know, listen, I I don't support drinking and driving, obviously. I mean, that's, it it's, but.
So I'm gonna move.
They allow the drive-through liquor store, so you're in your car, you don't even have to get out of your car. You pick up what you want and you keep on going. The the assumption is, if you do that. If you then open it before you get back home, you're going to get in some level of trouble. And if you get caught, you will get a ticket, you could go to jail. Certainly will face a fine.
So there are some different regulations for alcohol consumption as opposed to cannabis consumption.
Yeah, I mean, we have pharmacies that are drive-through, so I don't understand why. This wouldn't be a drive-through.
And you also don't have.
You have less people parked on the roads, you're in and out, and you go.
You also don't. Well, the planning board didn't support it. So I'm I'm going to tell you that right now. The planning board was adamantly opposed to it.
So there we go. That kind of says.
Unfortunate.
And you also don't have pharmacists working in in the cannabis stores, so.
Recreational.
Again.
So is there any support to prohibit drive-through cannabis entities?
Boyfriend.
I would, I would support.
I don't support that.
I would support that.
Okay. We're adding um an insert before number nine.
Oh, so, okay.
And we're, um, my my motion is that we prohibit drive-through cannabis entities. Is there a second?
A second.
Madam Clerk, the roll call.
Certainly.
Who seconded it?
Me.
Okay. Um, Councilwoman Castelino?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gabor Michael?
No.
Councilman Rutherford?
No.
Councilwoman Scorpia?
Yes.
Council President Williams?
Yes. Number nine, any signage for a cannabis, licensed cannabis entity shall be subject to the approval from either the planning board. Or the zoning board of adjustments under the guidelines and standards governing commercial signs as set forth within the township municipal code. Any concerns? A license, I think it should be the township municipal code and the state guidelines, because the state guidelines do not.
Yeah, the state supersede us anyway.
That's implied.
Okay.
Yeah, well, well, there's one, well, I guess this was one that, because this, so one's in the Sid. There's guidelines that they have to follow. So would that come in here, would we add the Sid as well? Or?
It has to meet the guidelines of the Sid already if it's in the Sid district. That's.
Right, that was earlier in the.
That's already in the beginning.
Okay, so we don't have to add that there again.
Yeah, that's the same thing with the health department.
Yeah, because that's what, that's what made me mad, God, that she has to prove the sign, the signs.
I know, but it should have went to.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah. Okay, um, number ten, a licensed cannabis entity shall meet all the required security measures. As set forth in chapter five, section thirty four of the Township of West Orange Municipal Code. Work fine with that. Number eleven, cannabis consumption areas as defined in the New Jersey Cannabis Regulatory Enforcement Assistance and Marketplace. Modernization Act NJSA twenty four sixty one dash thirty one at sequence. Shall be prohibited from all licensed cannabis entities. Any unreadiness there? Number nine, repeal of conflicting ordinances. Any ordinance of the township which are in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed. To the extent of such conflict, non-severability, if any part of the ordinance shall be deemed invalid, such parts shall be severed in the. Invalidities therefore shall not affect the remaining parts of the ordinance. And eleven, effective date, this ordinance shall take effect upon final passage and publication in accordance with the law.
So I do, I think, and this is something that the council president and I discussed. I think that we should, the township should create a cannabis trust fund to help. To help with paying for enforcement.
And education.
In our schools, education.
Yeah.
Um.
That's a good idea.
I think we should.
And yes, so that's something, I think that they definitely have to go in the.
In the ordinance.
Somewhere, yes. I don't know where it would go, maybe it's a new.
Yeah, so it's going to be a new section.
So is that above and beyond the tax that they're paying?
Well, yeah, well, what we, what we discussed is that it be a percentage of the taxes be allocated. So we would follow the same process as the open space um of of open space fund, you, the ta, its tax.
Well, open space is done by um.
Committee.
Yeah, we had to have a referendum to to get that approved. Um, yeah, because we we raised it the year before last and that required.
But that was the referendum to do the raise.
It had to be done by referendum the first time, too. So to even have that, we had to, although in that case. It is not within your property taxes. It is in addition to.
Correct.
Property tax.
Correct.
So what you're suggesting is not above the two percent.
Right, we're not, it's from the two percent.
Whatever two percent that we get, we get to take a portion of that.
Yeah, I don't even think we could legally add, charge more than the two percent.
No, no, that's, that's, that's not what we're.
We're not assigned.
We want to take.
Percent that we receive from these entities, take a portion of that for this trust fund to help with education and enforcement.
And and enforcement.
I don't know. I I I don't think we should do that at this point.
I I think the whole reason why we're doing this is to give back to the. To to lessen our load across the budget to begin with.
Exactly.
Enforcement has to happen through the police department and through the school system and and the entities when they apply. Part of you see their packages, they're supposed to give back to the community with education.
That's right.
I understand that, but Chief Abbott made it very clear that the police will not be enforcing these in our parks. And this would be a great way to generate revenue to be able to pay uh for enforcement.
Okay, so 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 to that point, to that point. We have the Park Patrol, Ms. Morelli's in the in the audience, uh that we've been waiting for Mr. Keough to initiate. And have funding for, to write tickets. The only way you're enforcing this, and let's not kid ourselves here. Is to ticket people like, and one of my notes that I wanted to talk about when we got through this is to add to our. Our smoking ordinance in the parks and the use of cannabis in the parks is also to include that with special events. Now, we were pretty fortunate. I wasn't at street fair, but we were pretty fortunate where there there were smells of people utilizing. But we could put that in our special events for people not to to smoke anything. You know, let's not forget, ten fifteen years ago, and I get you guys crazy, but ten fifteen years ago, nobody wanted to smell a cigarette for a mile. So you you couldn't go anywhere and and, you know, even in restaurants, it was banned cigarette smoking. And the same thing too with special events, parks. It's already banned. This is already banned. It's just enforcing it. And the only way we can enforce it is to ticket people. We already have a mechanism in place. Uh, we just, that's part of the fees that we have to increase to get get the fines. I mean, the first time is is whatever, it could be a warning. But, you know, second or third time, you you don't get it through your, your thick skull. You get a hefty fine and then you learn not to do things. We do have a problem in Degnan Park. Let's not get ourselves, Mr. Keough has people on tape. Because we have cameras there.
Problem with that in all our parks.
It's, it's all, we have, we, and we have parents that are, why are they doing this? I I didn't know this was going to happen when I voted for it. So education's a big piece. We're putting a couple posters. We we gotta have to pay our parks people. To go out there and issue these tickets.
That's why we're talking about.
Yeah.
Creating a dedicated trust fund, so that it's for education and enforcement.
But I think.
And then the expense doesn't fall on us financially because we aren't such budget constrained.
But it is, it's our money we're taking and using for that. Hire people and that comes from your budget.
And this trust fund can help. We can use that money if we allocate it.
It should go to our.
Councilwoman Scorpia, I'm gonna just kindly ask you.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I'm supportive. I also want to talk to Mr. Gross how how it would operate. I don't want to just create something and and a couple bucks sit there. And it goes nowhere. So I just want to make sure, because it sounds great and I applaud you. I think that's a great idea. It's got to be utilized or else.
And I think it will definitely be utilized with all this enforcement that we need.
Yeah, I can support that. I think it's a good idea to dedicate a portion of the tax for enforcement, because we know we don't have. You know, we've discussed whether it's in the parks and the health department. It's definitely not in the police department. And we don't have enough people.
And I spoke to Mr. Keough. Mr. Keough said even if he were to have his staff, that they don't have enough people there already.
So.
Short staff.
I'll also, just to clarify, the people who can issue tickets and citations in West Orange. Are the police department, the health department, and the zoning department. It's limited to those three entities. So this is why cannabis enforcement is probably going to likely fall under the health department. So this fund could certainly be utilized to help supplement their budget. Um, I am in absolute one hundred percent.
We need.
Um, and then I think it's for us to decide um as a body. How then to utilize those funds for enforcement, or at least to make recommendations. So but if, but I think it will supplement the the funds. And I think it's no different from, again, open space. Even though open space is taxed a little bit differently, the open space funds are dedicated to the preservation and the use of open public spaces.
And that's part of the e-cigarette money goes to the um enforcement and the education pieces. So they collect their higher fees and we're got, we're raising them even higher. Because that money is is spent on the enforcement.
So I think we're all suggesting kind of similar processes. It's just in a different, um, you know. It's just in a different ven venue, because now we're talking about cannabis as opposed to.
I do think it's important to have it in this ordinance, so at least it can pass and then mayor.
Well, I think we need to kind of figure out what the allocation is going to be, like, how how much of the two percent or so.
Well, we said five percent. We talked about five percent would be a nice allocation dedicated to just enforcement and education. And so, and and the math, so that I can share, um, what we took was estimated totals from what we understand. To be the monthly distribution in Bloomfield. Bloomfield generates, um, their facility generates. And this is from the Bloomfield mayor, five hundred thousand dollars a month.
So as more come online, those numbers are going to go down. Maplewood does about a half a million a month also. Or one of them in Maplewood, the one that opened, or the first one opened, did about a half a million a month, too. But if you're looking at a half a million a month, that's six million a year.
Times five percent is.
No, times a two percent.
Time, right, times the two percent first.
Hundred and twenty thousand times the five percent of that is six thousand dollars.
Or six thousand dollars. Okay, so we're talking about six thousand. Well, well, we have, it's not, it's not just this fund. This is to, in combination with the other funds that we have. So we have the two percent. We have fees coming in from just the application process.
Ten percent, sorry, council.
Yeah, I think.
Well, I think if we're going to increase it significantly, we we should, we should probably do that.
Let's have a a full conversation about it and let's just for one time be done before nine o'clock.
I am in full support of that. So Councilwoman Gabor Michael.
Supported. I think we should do it. Let's figure out the mechanism and the.
So we'll talk to our, we'll talk to our chief financial officer and we will find out what that can look like. And I will also make the recommend, well, let me, let me put this out here. Um, colleagues, is that something if we get resolution that we want to add? Or do we want to leave this untouched so that when we come to the next council meeting, we're prepared to vote?
Leave it untouched and just get it to go.
I think we did a good job tonight.
Well, and remember, you're doing first reading, not that you're going to change it again, but if you have any more commentary at that point, you can amend it. And then for second meeting, it could be finalized.
Does that make you a little more comfortable, Councilwoman?
And it's going to go to planning before it's actually finalized, so.
I want to thank my council colleagues. We struggled through. It started off a little bit rocky. Of course, we have those same. Uh, dispositions that we had two nights ago, but I am very pleased to see that in three hours, we have gone through all pages of this document. We have come to a um consensus and we are prepared to submit this document. Uh, to our legal department with the changes that we have recommended for our first reading and our next council meeting on June twenty seven.
Can I just say one thing?
Certainly. Certainly.
I'd like to thank Ms. Hershey and all of the constituents on Pleasant Valley Way who worked so hard for so many hours with me on this on this ordinance.
Certainly. Thank you, Councilwoman.
And I also want to thank the investors because I know they've been extremely patient with us. I know this hasn't been an easy process and I am anxious for you to get open, to see where we're at and to see how to refine this. And hopefully, a lot of my concerns were for naught. Um, but again, you know, I I appreciate your understanding that, you know, we're we're we're, at least for myself, where I'm coming from with with all my nervousness about this whole endeavor. But thank you. I appreciate it.
I move the clothes.
Second.
Call in favor.
Good night, West Orange. Thank you all for joining us. Please know that you have the opportunity to have public comment when we have this on second reading, typically on first reading, which will be at the next council meeting. Uh, we do not allow public comment. So if you do have any questions or concerns, please email us at council@westorange.org so that we can have those kind of discussions at first reading. We can certainly discuss and make those changes. But again, without any type of public comment until we get to second reading. So please don't hesitate to reach out. I want to thank you all um for your time this evening and wish everyone a wonderful um weekend. Don't forget, we have Juneteenth this weekend and Juneteenth activities at Town Hall on Saturday. Also want to wish all of our fathers a happy Father's Day. Thank you, West Orange, and good night.